Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting of the City Council of Pearland for Monday, October the ninth, year 2017. It's astonishing how fast time has gone and how fast we're traveling. So, thank all of you for being here. If you'll please rise tonight, we'll have an invocation, and our pledged allegiance will be led by Police Chief John Spire. Lord, we love you, and we know that you love us, for you show us in so very many ways. You were with us during, watched over our city during the unfortunate and disastrous visit to Ferguson Harvey, and we lift up and bless our first responders, and the many organizations, and volunteers who worked tirelessly to help those in need, to be with our, and for being with our city, with our citizens as we continue the recovery process. And Lord, we ask that you be with and comfort the victims of the Las Vegas tragedy, and work to put America back on the right track of where we need to be. And in this troubled world today, we ask that you watch over and guard our civilian and military personnel overseas, and may they return soon and safe. And Lord, we ask that you watch over us today, throughout the meeting today, and be with us on our trips to our home, for we ask thee saints, in your name, and for your sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We appreciate all of you being here tonight, and we also appreciate the Police Department letting us use the training room. So, this is sort of a training exercise in that respect, and we appreciate you being here with us today. We have a pretty long agenda, and I can assure you that we're gonna be here close to midnight tonight because of not only this, but a public hearing, and also a workshop, in which we have to go through a stack of items that we have to catch up with. 2017 has been a busy year, and we're not through yet, so we're gonna see if we can't do some catch-up and get back to a normal, normal operations. I wonder what that's like? We're gonna try and see if we have one of them one day. Okay, we're, we do the roll call. Our WAC City Council members are here and present, with bright and shiny faces. And if you move into your agenda to item number four, we have citizen comments, and I'd like to ask Mr. Ron Solomon. Please come up to the podium, to the microphone, and make a presentation, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I don't know why it took me so long to get here. My name is Ron Solomon. I am the creative director and founder of Kids Back Porch Productions. We are a youth theater here in Pearland. We've been here since 2005. I am moving Wednesday to the Smoky Mountains to take care of my eighty-seven-year-old dad, who has Parkinson's, and live with him. And so, my wife took a retirement from teaching school for twenty-six years with Silver Lake Elementary, well, sixteen there, and I have taken a retirement from the theater, and we have found others to continue it going. But I wanted to say a few comments about our theater, as well as about the arts in Pearland. I may be leaving, but my heart is here. I've lived here sixteen years, the longest I've ever lived anywhere in my life, in one sequence, and we have grown to love Pearland. I am a professional actor, and director, and writer. I have done a lot of work down at AD Players, and the Alley, and Tuts. I've been a guest solist for eight years at the Houston Symphony. I could be very easily working professionally downtown Houston all the time, but my heart is with kids. My wife teaches music to kids, and I love to teach them in theater. And so, we started this theater twelve years ago, especially for the elementary and middle school children who don't have drama in the school system, to meet a need of those children who may not prefer art, or sports as much, and need an outlet where they can use their talents, develop their talents, and learn teamwork, just like you would on a team. It is for youth. We have done sixty-five plays and musicals over the twelve years. We are now the largest nonprofit arts organization in Pearland. But it has been an uphill battle to bring arts to Pearland and to keep them here. Most people here are about school, work, and sports. Now, there's nothing wrong with any of those, but I believe that there's a place in everyone's heart for the arts, either to participate or to attend. We have had a partnership for years with Parks and Rec. They have been very supportive. We will teach classes for free, and they will give us some space for rehearsals and that sort of thing. KBP has also been a recipient of a grant from the city, every year that they've existed for the arts, that comes out of the hotel tax fund. But after twelve years, I do not think Pearland is as arts-friendly as they could be. For years, Friendswood has tried to get us to move there. There is so much more support for the arts there, apparently, and including financially. But I've wanted to keep the theater here, because Pearland is my home. Venues for our plays have been a problem. We have used the school district, but when we're using C.A. Nelson, it costs us sixty-two-hundred to seven-thousand dollars a week. That's the nonprofit rate. We've used the Golden Rule Services, which used to be the old Carden Jackson School, and the community center before the remodel. It is no longer available to us. It's almost a miracle people still find us after all these moves. We should probably be called the Nomad Theater. To lease the space for ourselves, we would need a seven-to-ten-thousand-square-foot building, but we can't afford the rent. It would be nice to have a building that was available to all of the community for various kinds of events. We need your support, gentlemen, coming to our plays to set an example for the community. It's one thing to say you support the arts when you're running for office, but to see your faces at our plays, I think really sets a great example for the rest of the people in the community. Also asking local businesses and business owners that you know if they would be generous to the arts, because most places like Strickland Chevrolet and so on, you'll see all kinds of sports teams that they have supported, and again, that is wonderful, but very little money goes to the arts, as if it were not as important. But if we lose the arts, our community loses, and we lose more new businesses to places like Sugar Land and others, where there seems to be more to do for their employees. Please help all of us involved with the arts to reach a larger audience. I may be leaving, but my heart is still here after sixteen years, and I want to see the city become a destination for those who love the arts, as a spectator or as a participant who wants to improve their skill and their craft. Thank you so much for your time. I wish the City of Pearland the best in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron. He has put together a fabulous organization, the Back Porch Productions. If you've ever been to one, it looks sort of a Broadway-type production, and it's been fabulous over the years. He's doing something a lot of children don't do. His father is in very poor health up in northern part of the United States, up or somewhere, and he is going up to take care of him, and shifting the responsibility of the Back Porch Productions to another organization. So, Ron, thank you for being what you have done over these last number of years, and I've been a great fan of yours and have attended several of your organizations. As a matter of fact, I was there the first time, and we did the opening of your first show, the Back Porch Productions. That's right. And thank you so much for that, and please come back and visit with us often, and take care of your dad.
All right. Appreciate all of you.
Thank you so much. We also have another citizen, that's Tony Barcelona, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, too. Don't get y'all long enough this night. As an assistant principal in the district here, I-
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, Tony Barcelona. Sorry, Tony Barcelona. As an assistant principal in the district, Pearland ISD, I support Ron and his ventures of fine arts. It's a huge aspect of developing kids, and what makes this community great. So, I'm on here, I'm here on behalf, I came the last board, City Council meeting about the concerns of Pine Hollow subdivision. Doing research the past two or three weeks, I've got a rough estimate of four-to-five-million dollars of damage to my neighbors. Currently, about thirty-six, three dozen neighbors, I'm not sure, I have a couple here, but, you know, I'm kind of the ringleader of trying to help organize the concerns we have. I believe some of y'all have seen this. This is a drainage improvement plan that was done a while back, that there were some improvements that should have been done, and they weren't. You know, and so, it's, we're, I appreciate the memo that went out after our meeting of looking at some things that need to be done. We just wanna know that, as talking to neighbors who have lived there since 2001, when they flooded, things were happening, and all of a sudden, it kind of went away. And again, most of everybody in this room had nothing to do with where that was fifteen years ago. What we're asking is that we keep our word, and we correct the issues in Pine Hollow. That is a community that's been around for a long time. It's a community that is vibrant to the east part of Pearland, and we are gonna continue to fight for our neighborhood, and make sure that, again, this isn't about the record rain that fell. This was within, as I got to some neighbors, they flooded within three hours of the rain starting, and that's the concern, because we're gonna have that again. We may not have Harvey again, but we will have a storm where we have rain in a short amount of time. And so, we just, we appreciate the steps we've taken, we wanna continue that, and we wanna keep the dialogue open with everybody, and, you know, again, you know, we're here to work with you, we're here to work together as one, to make our community better. So, thank you.
Good, a good report, and thank you very much for your presentation. Let's move in our agenda to item number four, which is, which we just finished, which is complete, and I didn't, did we have any others? No others. Okay. Let's move then in our agenda to item six, which is a consent agenda. I'd like to have item C removed, or any other items to be removed from the consent agenda, which consists of items A through E. Hearing none, I'll ask Councilmember Carbone, if he would do the honor and present that.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through E, with the exception of C, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and any question or comment on motion item three? Hearing none, we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero. Seven to zero.
Okay.
One of these days, I'll get that down. Seven to zero.
Yeah, that'll work. Okay, Mr. Carbone, would you present item C?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R. 2017-203, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is the appointments to the Board of Directors, Houston County Council, and, of course, I've been on the board for a number of years in the past, president of HCSA and the state. And last year, Councilmember Moore was my alternate, and I was, had been requested by the staff at the HCSA, would you make sure he gets back on there? And I'd like to make sure that we could add Councilmember Moore to the, to the resolution.
So amended.
I'll make that amendment.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion, we have an amendment.
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Secretary. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay. We have the motion, but any questions or comment on the motions? Hearing none, I think we have motion second, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero, as amended.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item seven, which is new business, which is the first reading of ordinance seventeen, zero, 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 fifteen. Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number CUP 17-00015, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Turn this over to Mr. Greigs to give you a brief outline of the project.
Good evening, gentlemen. This is a conditional use permit for ninety-six oh-three Broadway Street. The proposal was for approval of a liquor package store. This is within a shopping center that was developed in 2007. You'll see on the radius map shortly that there is one approved, and one just outside of the two-mile radius. There are no exterior modifications proposed for this development. It's all interior build-out. The zoning for the property is general business. It's within a retail offices and services, future land use category, and we had joint public hearing on this last month, September eleventh. This is the radius map that I was showing. The one that's within the two-mile radius is the Costco location. Just outside of that two-mile radius is the location of the Kroger on Shutter Creek, yeah, Shutter Creek Parkway. This is the site plan that was provided. Staff has not received any return notices or phone calls in support or opposition, and no one spoke in either support or opposition of the request at the joint public hearing. It generally matches all of our conformity requirements within the code, and P&amp;Z voted three to two to recommend approval. And that is, oh, here's an aerial map and the zoning map, side by side, for your viewing, and that completes staff's report.
Okay. The council, have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Kind of in keeping with the spirit of what we had talked about at the last meeting for the last vote, I'd like to move that we postpone this vote until such time as we've created better rules and regulations as to how we wanna space out these liquor stores, to address the concerns of the citizens who came in here, voiced their opinion.
Second.
Any other question or comment on this item?
We have a motion and a second to postpone, Mayor.
Motion, second to postpone. I'm gonna ask council if they'll lean closer to the microphone when they, when they speak, because I know some of the people in the back room have said they couldn't hear, and of course, the mayor has, could improve his hearing a little bit himself. But I'm not supposed to hear everything that goes on, so it sort of works out fine. We have motion to postpone. The council, have any question or comment on that item? Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
Councilmember Little?
No.
We have motion passed four to three.
Motion passed four to three.
Four to three, postpone.
That one tucked away neatly. Let's move to item number two. Councilmember Reed, would you do the other?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number CUP seventeen dash zero, 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 one, eight, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion second on the floor. We're in staff report.
All right. This is a conditional use permit for Community Faith Church on Pearland Parkway. It is for undeveloped property east of Town Lake Estates, the single-family subdivision, which is located along Pearland Parkway. The proposed development is for a church. It is surrounded by either a single-family residential or a drainage feature to the south and east. The current zoning of the property is R. two. The future land use designation is medium-density residential, and this had a joint public hearing on September eleventh. This is the site plan that was provided. One note, this did, as we mentioned at the joint public hearing, it did have a zoning board of adjustment hearing the week after. The zoning board of adjustment passed this site plan, so there are no further issues with the site plan. And as noted, north for this plan is facing towards your left. Staff has not received any return notices or phone calls in either support or opposition of this conditional use permit. There was one person that spoke in support at the joint public hearing. Generally, this meets all of our code conformity. The only two issues that come out are the comprehensive plan for the future land use, as it talks to medium-density residential, but churches typically go hand-in-hand with residential categories, and they are currently working on finishing up their plating. P&amp;Z recommended approval of this request with a vote of five to zero, and I'll leave you with the aerial map and zoning of the properties, and completes staff's report.
Okay. I complete staff report, and the council, have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I can borrow staff for just a little bit with respect to the requested variance, and where this is gonna put us on CUP after ZBA comes through. So, we're still in the old process, where this is gonna be accepted by ordinance, correct?
Correct.
So, right now, they have a site plan in here that's gonna be included as part of, as part of the CUP pack. What they're requesting is that they have a zero setback along the south property line up against the detention pond, since, even though it's technically zoned, I think it's R. one?
R. two.
R. two. There's no, there's a detention bond there, so there's no residential, so there's more than enough buffer.
Right, and we're looking at taking that as a future text change, so that way we don't have this issue again.
Okay, and I appreciate that. What I'm, I would not be, since we can't include it as part of the CUP, since it's gotta go to ZBA.
It already has gone to ZBA.
It has gone to, okay, I'm sorry, I thought in the packet it said, it said it had not gone yet.
No, no, we had the JPH, and then the week after, we had the ZBA for it, which is why there was a little bit of uncertainty at JPH, but now that that's all passed.
So, the stat, everything's passed, they got the zero lights, basically.
Okay.
Then, my apologies, thank you.
Okay. Does the council have any question or comment on this item? That did fine. Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
And Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number three on our council, which is first reading of ordinance two thousand M. one sixty-four. We do have a request for a citizen to hear of that, and it's Mike Kalinsky. Did I get that right? Is that? That's Mike, back here, coming up now. Thank you for being here tonight, Mike.
My name is Mike Nuckey. I own the property at six-four-four-two Rice Road. I also own the property at six-four-two-eight Rice Road. There's a proposal to rezone the property next door to me, to commercial use. Rice Road is a narrow two-lane road. It's nineteen-foot wide, bar ditches on both sides of the road. If you get off either side, you're going into the ditch. The proposal, with McCard Road going through, the engineers have developed a plan for water drainage and so forth, which will alleviate a problem if we start building commercial businesses on that property. Before this is done, we're gonna create more of a flooding problem in our area, and in particular, to my property. We already have a problem with people building in that area, causing us to be flooded, people building without permits, that's changing the water routes in that area. And if we start putting commercial buildings and all on that property before the McCard Road is developed, in order to facilitate all of this, it's going to create more of a flooding problem for us in that area. Once you put a kitchen in, before that's done, once McCard Road is in progress, you're gonna drive the animals out. Right now, we've got large field rats, we've got raccoons, we've got skunks, coyotes, bobcats, and all out there. You start putting food waste products out in containers, the raccoons can open containers, I can't. So, we're gonna start having food stuff scattered around. The sanitary waste comes through between four and five o'clock in the morning for commercial pickup. Where they plan on putting the road is right next to my bedroom window, on the residential side. So, I'm retired. I don't like getting up at four and five o'clock in the morning. Sometimes, I don't like getting up at seven in the morning. So, we have problems. The zoning in that area is strange, as you noticed on the, on the meeting last time. Few years back, I went down to planning and zoning, because I wanted to know specifically where residential R. one ended, where commercial began. The gentleman came out, and in no uncertain terms, it was all R. one residential. My neighbor, David Reeny, on the west side of me, built a house. He noticed that it was zoned residential R. one commercial. He put in an application, paid his fees, to get everything rezoned R. one. Before it came to a hearing, he received his application back and his fees with a letter stating that entire property is R. one. Based on the information I received at the last meeting, the first hundred-and-forty feet from Rice Road going southbound is residential, the rest is commercial. With that being the case, half of my home on six-four-two-eight is in commercial, a third of my garage workshop is in commercial, the two outbuildings are in commercial. I think before we go in and start saying this is cast in stone, that whole area needs to be looked at, in case the property down the way, fifty-five-something, thirty-four, I believe it is, they just built, they put a million dollars into redoing that property. They brought in truckloads of dirt, they built a swimming pool, they built a fountain, they built a pavilion, and they put a wrought iron block fence all the way around two acres of property with a solid block wall in the back. Of course, when they did that, they raised the drainage ditch that goes from Hatfield to Woody Road, which worked fine for years, but now that's been raised, and we have water trying to go the opposite direction, especially when we get much rain at all. So, we got a problem. So, putting a commercial business in right now without additional planning is going to create more of a problem. I have spoke with a number of our neighbors, unfortunately, because this is a holiday. They've been out of town, they couldn't make it. We are all, at this point, against, in other words, Rice Road is a residential R. one street. We wanna keep it that way. That's the long and the short of it.
Good, super. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does the council have any further comment or questions?
We need a motion in a second.
We have a motion?
No, we need a motion in a second.
I'm sorry.
We need a motion.
Yeah, okay.
We did comments before.
We do have, okay. You have, sorry about that.
Consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number two thousand M. dash one sixty-four, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. We're in a, need a staff report.
Thanks, Mayor. I think the applicant wanted to talk too, but you want the staff report first? Well, go ahead, Martin.
That was the applicant.
No, that was.
It was a public comment, okay.
So, we're gonna do staff report.
Okay, okay.
Go on ahead and get that.
We're in a staff report.
All right. Again, this is for the Rice Road zone change request, sixty-five eighteen. It's for a small strip of land-
It's for a small strip of land, basically to create a commercial flag lot for a catering business. The property is currently developed with a single family residence. The property was annexed into the city in nineteen eighty-three, and the future land use designation has this area as industrial. This had a joint public hearing on September eleventh. As you can see from the conformity table, it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan designation. It meets the thoroughfare as it's a neighborhood street. The Unified Development Code has some interesting issues with the front part of the lot being R1 with the rear portion being general commercial. The property was plotted as Heritage Miller subdivision, but that was never recorded, so a plot would be required for this to continue forward, and the property has access to water and sewer. Staff has not received any notices in support or opposition there, and again, have not been any phone calls. Three people spoke in support of the request at the JPH and three people spoke against it at, also at the JPH. We wanted to share with you again, staff's original, original recommendation, which was not to recommend approval of this zone change. These were included in the staff packet and also in the joint public hearing. P and Z recommended approval by a vote of four to one. And I will leave you with the aerial map and the zone change map for this request, and that completes staff's report.
Finish your staff report. Good. Counsel have any question or comment on that item?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I sympathize with the situation, but, you know, my position is, I feel I'm obligated to vote no for this, and I got, and I think I'm obligated to tell you just why. We, when we vote for a zone change, we vote for the land, not the use, not the situation. We have to consider the fact that you could sell this and any, and once that is zoned to allow for the commercial use, anything that's allowed in that use can now occupy that land. So right now, we have essentially a holding zone for when McCard comes through, the back end of the tracks are, they're kind of offering as a buffer for that not to preemptively become commercial use. I don't know if that was intentional when we did the zoning or if it was accidental, but ultimately, that's what we have. So, if we do allow for the zone change, then, and for whatever reason, let's say the worst case happened and your business wasn't able to survive and you had to move and you sell the land, you're going to sell it as a commercial piece of land and potentially a commercial buyer could take it, and then they could put whatever they want. And, you know, as much as I want to see you in parent land and make, and help you be successful as you can be, and, you know, I want to see that you have a great business that prospers, you know, for this situation, at least for my vote, we have to consider what, what the consequence is long term to, to the neighbors. So, I just wanted to let you know why, we had a long conversation, you seem like a very sweet, nice lady, and I wish you the best, but for this, I just can't, I can't come to terms with a yes vote on this.
Counsel, have any further comment on this item?
Just briefly, Mayor, you know, I was wondering, is there something that we could do, you know, I guess, some, something creative that we could do with maybe putting certain uses to bed to where if someone did sell the property, or if this owner of the property did sell it, they wouldn't be able to put a gas station or something of that nature, obviously not a gas station because of the CUP, but, I mean, basically what it is, is like Councilman Perez said, I mean, they could sell it and something else could go there.
Wouldn't have the ability to put any limitations on a straight zone, which a GB would be, so that would have to, the only way you can really accomplish that would be through a PD, and I don't even think this property is the size that we would even qualify to be able to do a PD, you know?
Yeah, just, just trying to see if there's some alternative ways or some creative ways that we can allow this person to, to get their business started.
I mean, time, time solves the issue. As soon as McCard goes through, they've got frontage on the commercial side and it solves the issue of being R1 in the back.
And, Mayor, if I could, I, I totally agree, my issue is, this is not the only area where we have property that has multiple zonings and doesn't always necessarily have access to the zone that they want to use. I mean, in this case, by right, commercial can be developed, the issue is getting to the commercial property. So, I, honestly, I will be voting in favor of it because we have said by right, the property owner can put commercial on this property. We just haven't given them any possible way of getting to that property for that commercial use because they can't build a road on property they don't own. So, we need to, in my opinion, look at our zoning maps and fix these problems where they exist because this isn't the first time we've run into them. And, you know, from a resident standpoint, I, I would be possibly even more concerned about the future land use when I see that everything around me is industrial, which I hope will change once McCard comes through and we'll go back to where it is, but commercials, not wonderful next to a house, industrials, probably a little worse. But, that's where I stand on it.
Any other question on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I thought during the joint public hearing, we were asking for some creative way to kind of figure this out, and I, I don't feel that that's what was presented to us. This is presented to us as a strict zone change, either it's, we're going to change it from R1 to GC, or we're going to change it GC to R1. So, I, I kind of have an issue with that. I too am probably going to be in favor of this because the back half of the property is GC. Whose fault is that? That's our fault. So, if the resident is trying to do something that they're by right able to do in that, in that zone, I, I don't know why we can't figure out how to allow it to happen, so.
It does present a bit of a problem, doesn't it? They, it's residential on the roadway, but what is that, about fifty, fifty feet back before we go into the new zone change, GC? It's R1 on the, about, let's talk about a third of the property facing the roadway, and then the rest of the property on the backside is, is, is GC, which is general. Trying to, trying to get to the development that would be on the backside where it is permitted is, is a challenge we're looking at, as you can probably see up on the, up on the screen up there. Any other further comment from council?
I request staff to look into some of these other areas where you have overlapping like this and we get these zoning, the maps changed.
You want to suggest that as one of the, one of the possibilities before we go into the vote?
No.
No.
Okay.
Well, it looks like at this point, we do have motion second on the floor, that's not a decision on.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
No.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
No.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed. Motion passed four to two.
An impatient record, let's move to item four on our collective agendas. Councilmember Little, would you present this for our consideration?
Number four, Mayor.
Five.
Five.
Five to two.
Resolution of Possible Action, Resolution Number R twenty seventeen dash one seven eight dash one. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
We were, yeah, that was for number five.
That's why I had it confused.
Yeah.
Okay, just skip four to five.
We're skipping two, five.
Okay, why don't we skip to five, and Perez, you?
No. No, we already.
We're already wrapped, we're already. I'll go back and forth.
Okay. Staff report. Can you do this, staff report on five?
Councilmember Little, you want to do five?
We already did, Mayor.
We need a staff report.
So, staff, uh, number five's mine, Mayor. This is just an extension of the, of the fee waiver subsequent to Hurricane Harvey. We suggested and council approved a thirty day time period for specifically renovation permits associated with storm damage to waive the, the standard building fees inspections. We've had a few, like thirty-five of those come through. Understanding is people are be, coming through for that, and we'd suggest and ask you extend that for another six days through November thirtieth.
Counsel, have any question or comment on this item? I don't hear a question or comment about this.
Councilmember Little.
Motion second, Mr. Secretary.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero, and we're going back to new business number four.
All right.
Counselmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor, Consideration of Possible Action. Yes, sir, Consideration of Possible Action, first reading ordinance number 2000 M-165, so moved.
Second. All right, this is.
Staff report, moving along this, be sure.
Yes, sir. This is for a zone change of twenty-four oh nine and twenty-four twenty-one, Max Road. It's from SR twelve to GC. The applicant proposes the development of an RV and boat storage facility with future commercial development along Max Road. There was a PD workshop for this use earlier this year, and now they're coming back for the zone change, and at future date, they'll go for a conditional use permit. The property was annexed into the city in nineteen ninety-seven, and the future land use has this as, uh, low density residential, got a part there. There was the joint public hearing on September eleventh, along with the rest of the cases. Staff has not received any return notices or phone calls in support or opposition, and there were two people who spoke at the joint public hearing. The code conformance table, this does not meet the low density residential. Max Road is a thoroughfare which would need to be widened, so it does not meet the thoroughfare plan. The SR twelve is in conformance with the, or the current zoning of SR twelve is in conformance with the low density residential, and the proposed change would create a non-conforming use for the existing houses that are on the property. The property is not plotted and it would need to have sewer and water extended to the site. Planning and zoning recommended approval of this request by a vote of five to zero. This is the aerial and the zoning map showing the current property. And that's complete staff's report.
Okay, this, they complete your report, counsel, any question or comment on that item? Looks like we have motion second on the floor, let the, hold it.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno. Oh, I'm, I'm, Little, Councilmember Little.
Aye.
And, and Owens, Councilmember Owens. Okay. Motion passed seven to zero, going back to now to do business number six, twenty seventeen dash one eighty.
Moving to item number six on our agenda. All right, we hook them from here.
Resolution number two thousand, second team, dad, one penny, so moved.
Second.
Motion is a second rule discussion, staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, counsel. This is an item that was on your previous agenda two weeks ago, and it was postponed. I think Councilmember Perez had requested some additional information, but more specifically, a map which showed a better illustration of the areas to be annexed, that's included in your packet this time. And we also wanted to afford an opportunity for representatives from the Mud District to appear this evening in case the council had any questions. And again, this is a fourteen point seven acre, three separate tracks, totally fourteen acres, that would be annexed into what is the Riverstone Ranch, Mud, Mud five oh nine, which is Riverstone Ranch, and also would be developed by Meritage Homes, and. Representatives from the Mud, here, yes.
That's staff report, does council have any question or comment on that?
Just a couple, if I could borrow the representative.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, the gentleman's coming up right now, Mayor, I apologize. So just to make sure I get my head wrapped around what we're doing, so tracks, annexation track one and two, those are obviously eminently developable, so I'm assuming that there's a plan to extend those areas and start getting some homes on those lots. Track three is just the one I'm curious about, what was, what's the purpose of, of that annexation at this point?
That will be, excuse me, I'm a little bit under the weather. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and answer y'all's questions. This third annexation track, it will be part of future development. I, I don't have the, the land plan as far as what the developer is planning, but again, it'll be single family residential, excuse me, like the rest of the development.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. Ryan Harper, I'm with Alan Boone-Humphries-Robinson, and we represent Harris County, Mud, five zero nine.
Any further comments from council? Looks like we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero. Thank y'all very much.
Moving back to you, Councilmember Carbone, number seven.
Thank you, Mayor, Consideration of Possible Action, Resolution R twenty seventeen dash two oh five, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir, this is a project that's been on our CIP, we're looking forward to moving forward, it's a important connection in our trail system, and also proud to note that a significant portion, about eighty percent of the construction is being underfunded by outside dollars, so recommend your consideration.
Any question to come up from council? That was on a previous bond issue, I think, previous year is what it, that's good to see that moving along as well as it is. We have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
New business item eight, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action, Resolution Number two zero one seven dash two one zero, so moved.
Second.
Have motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Another project that's been on our capital improvements, and this is off of Magnolia, long had visions for constructing Nixon's Basins there, a nature interpretive center, named after Dolores Fenwick, and so we've been through the design, we're to the construction award now. right, we're to the construction award now, uh, bids did come back, uh, higher for construction than we'd anticipated, so we've been spending some time examining that and trying to figure out ways to reduce costs but still maintain the integrity of the project and long-term, uh, vision liability, uh, viability of that, uh, we do recommend accessing the, uh, Park Development Fund to bridge up some of the funding gap in this project.
Okay, because, cap, staff having, appreciate that report, any counsel comments at this point? Hearing none, I think we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Counselor member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor member Reed?
Aye.
Counselor member Ordno?
Aye.
Counselor member Little?
Aye.
Counselor member Perez?
Aye.
Counselor member Owens?
Aye.
Counselor member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, moving to new business item number nine, Counselor member Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, consideration of possible action, resolution number twenty seventeen dash two one one, so moved.
Second.
Have motion second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Yes, Mayor, I'll, I'll handle that, Mayor, I'll go ahead and do that one.
You're the staff report, all right.
If you recall, the ci, the council previously authorized the transfer of real property to U of H for the construction of a, a, a building that they had approved and, uh, by the legislature, uh, in the past legislature, uh, authorizing the construction of a new building, uh, in order to accomplish that, we transferred land and then amended our lease with them accordingly, um, what this does is actually does a second amendment to, another amendment to the lease, and then also authorizes the transfer of an additional one point three acres, the reason that's necessitated is because the property that they were going to build on, there wasn't enough room for them to avoid some designated wetlands, this allows them to avoid those wetlands by, uh, adjusting the boundary by one point three acres.
You know, when we move property like this in this value, I don't think we could, you could have it built out on something with more value than the University of Houston Perland Campus, which is a plus, staff report, uh, counsel having a question or comment at this point?
Mayor?
I, I just want to make a comment, I will be voting against it, I, I voted against the first, um, transfer property, so, if anybody's wondering, ask me or go back to those minutes in the sake of saving time tonight.
Okay, counsel have a question or comment on this item? Hearing none, we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Counselor member Reed?
Aye.
Counselor member Ordno?
No.
Counselor member Little?
Aye.
Counselor member Perez?
Aye.
Counselor member Owens?
Aye.
Counselor member Carbone?
Aye.
Counselor member Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed six to one.
Moving to new business item ten, Counselor member Ordno.
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash two twelve, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, ready for staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, we are in the thick of, uh, going through all the paperwork and documentation required for seeking the largest, uh, and appropriate reimbursements for the city as possible, uh, what's before you is a, in a lot of ways a formality, but it is a required, um, filing, uh, with, uh, the federal government, FEMA, um, and, and you granting us permission to go ahead and access the, uh, pub, public assistance program.
Okay, staff report completed, counsel have any question or comment? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor.
Counselor member Ordno?
Aye.
Counselor member Little?
Aye.
Counselor member Perez?
Aye.
Counselor member Owens? Counselor member Carbone?
Aye.
Counselor member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor member Reed?
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to new business item twelve, which is, uh, your staff, uh, Mr. Pearson?
Uh, this is a, a council discussion item, so really, uh, we provided the background information, uh, the topic is relative to, uh, from the hurricane, um, right after that, the city awarded a contract, uh, for debris removal from the storm, um, and as is, uh, typical and, you know, follows the protocols, uh, this is all dealing with, uh, the residential properties, um, we're working through that, so, or maybe sixty percent through on the residential is what we said, and, uh, you know, which, that's, we're struggling through that frankly a little bit, just, uh, trying to get resources, but, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we're working through getting some additional assets and it's gonna, you know, was told us we'd be a long haul in that, um, we do not, uh, pick up debris removal from commercial properties, uh, keeping with FEMA regulations, that's viewed as something the businesses, uh, handle, and, you know, I believe if you look around town, that is the case, uh, in terms of their own insurance and, uh, contracts, um, and we're five weeks into this, you look around and, uh, if we're to do something different, I guess we would be concerned about, uh, you know, uh, other storms and precedents and, and what have you, and equity of going back at this point, uh, but understand the question, and we'll try to make that clearer, uh, when this comes up again, what the scope is.
Counsel have any question or comment on this item?
Does counsel have any questions or comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor, Portem, um, so, um, I had, I had requested this, I know we have, it was kind of an emergency resolution, and I understand the brevity of the, of the packet, wasn't, um, uh, wasn't as spelled out, uh, I think, as, um, time would have allowed us, um, or could have allowed us to say that this was for residential only, not commercial, I understand that ninety percent of, uh, the residential will be reimbursed, but FEMA does not reimburse any of the commercial, um, you know, we're kind of down the pipe on this, um, you know, I, personally, if had we had that, had that conversation, um, I, I would have expressed my personal belief, let's go ahead and just pick up the commercial and, and we'll pick up the bill, just to make sure that the entire city gets clean, um, I don't know how much commercial is left, um, I don't know how much debris, once we've done with all the residential, will still be out there, but I'd like to have some kind of, or I'd like to have, I wanted to have this discussion so we can at least just come to a decision, is do, do we have a safety net of, you know, if we've got a commercial property that for whatever reason cannot or will not pick up their own debris, do we, do we have a process where we're gonna pick that up so we just don't have, um, this stuff sitting on the side of a road, uh, long-term without any, um, any expectation's gonna get picked up, and if it happens to be a commercial property where they can't afford to pick it up, you know, our only enforcement mechanism is really either to find it, pick it up and charge them, um, you know, how do we wanna, how do we wanna go through that process, um, if, if that, if that debris's not picked up, um, and my personal opinion is that I, I think we, we should just go ahead and, and fit the bill and, and take care of it, um, you know, I know, uh, the budget is always a concern, um, particularly for, uh, a few of the other council members, but we did, we did discuss, uh, in the, um, in the process of, of adopting our budget, we discussed the necessity of having additional money and resources available for the costs, additional costs associated with recovering from, uh, from Harvey, and I think this was one of them, and being able to clean up our city, I, I don't think anybody would argue, we need a little bit more money to make sure that, you know, we, we got everything picked up, so, um, I'm hoping that, you know, everybody's able to pick up, or that we're able to pick up all the residential, the commercial take care of themselves through their own insurance, that they're not, we're, none of the businesses are stressed, particularly the small businesses are stressed where the, it, it affects their ability to do business, but I'd like to see something as a, as a safety net to make sure that everything gets, uh, all the debris gets picked up, um, at the end of whatever debris collection cycle that we have.
Clay, I've heard that, um, that the price that they're paying more in, but, Nomak and Florida are considerably more of what they're paying, uh, the collection personnel here and the relusions and people, is that, uh, still becoming obvious?
Yes, sir, and that's for the separate, um, ongoing debris for the residential, but as I mentioned, we're, we're going through, our contractor, I think, is, uh, getting the smaller resources they can, and then we're diverting some staff, uh, to try to, you know, it's hurting our public works operations, but we're backfilling that, and then we're getting some techs dot help, they're coming in with three crews, about nine people, equipment, so optimistic we'll be able to pick it up and, you know, be done by November, if not before.
Okay. Does counsel have more contribution to this item at the discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I, first off, let me start by saying, this is a policymaking board, I don't see where this is a policy issue, I don't see a problem at this time, um, I, I wasn't elected to, to run the city, I was elected to make policy and hire those that do, um, and, and it bothers me when politicians get into running things that they're supposed to be managing, um, there, there is a difference, um, I, I don't know of anybody else that's doing what's being talked about, I don't know where the funds would come to do what's being talked about, and, a, as I just stated, I don't even know if it's an issue that needs to be a, a, addressed at this time, so, um, you know, I, I wasn't one that asked for this to be put on the agenda, I, I don't know who the, the other two were, but I, I just don't see the issue, I guess I work with FEMA, I know, I mean, I, I knew from the beginning FEMA does residential, we, we, we don't pick up trash from commercial, they're, they're free to go to the open market and, um, take care of it as they see fit, and that there are avenues for them to go through if they don't have insurance, um, that would cover that, so, I'm, I'm not of the opinion to take any action at this time.
Well, uh, I would just counter that, I, I mean, I, I do believe this is a policy, do, do we have a policy of whether at the end of a, a major event, are we going to take responsibility for cleaning?
Yes, we use FEMA.
Let me finish.
That's our policy.
Let me finish.
We made the policy.
And if FEMA, for what FEMA cannot cover, as we do other things that are not covered by other, um, by techs dot, by any of the other funding mechanisms, by, uh, do we jump in and make up the difference, do we, do, are we to say, if there is a commercial business that for whatever reason cannot afford, didn't have insurance, does not have the ability, or maybe have closed its doors, uh, after they pulled all the debris out, which, to be honest with you, I don't know how much is left, um, but are we to say, it's not our fault, we'll just sit there and let it rot?
No, I believe that would be the same things we've gone through with residential property that has trash issues that the residents want, we go through the court system, then there is a legal avenue that allows us to then go on and do that and put a lien against the property.
So, that's a discussion item, that's our, if that's our policy.
We already do it.
If that's our policy, do we want to put people who are already hurting because of an event that they couldn't control, this is not somebody who just elects not to mow their lawn, elects to trash their own house, elects to, 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 to do things that are abhorrent to their neighbors, this is somebody who maybe possibly cannot afford to clean up after their own business after this event, are we willing to say, we know that you're hurting and our policy is, we're just gonna fine you until you fix it?
We put a lien against the property, we do not fine, it, it's not a fine they have to pay at that time.
It's a lien, it's certainly a financial mechanism, so.
Yes, with the budget we have, that's where we are.
Okay, so.
So, I, I mean, I made my point, you made yours, we don't have to agree.
I know how you feel, I personally feel like it's still incumbent upon us to try and put our city back whole, um, and again, I mean, you, you had suggested that we continue to increase, uh, the tax rate to be able to take care of things that we need to do, I think this is something.
And we chose not to do that.
I think this is something that we need to do.
We chose not to increase the tax rate, therefore I can't fund it.
You can't fund it, but this, but you're not, you're not alone on this body.
I understand, that's my point.
Everybody gets your point, I would just say, is it something, do we want to give staff direction to at least say, uh, at least say, go out and see what's left, and see what the cost is, and see what it would bear upon us on our budget, to find out what we would need to do to pick up what's not been picked up, uh, at least we can make a decision from an educated standpoint, um, if not, then we don't, but it, I think it merits the discussion.
I don't think that discussion can take place here, so why don't we, let me ask the staff, uh, with Clay, to, uh, take a look at that, and to give, bring us back a recommendation and let us proceed on, because we need to go in.
Mayor, point, point of order, if there's not two council members that want to see it move forward, I don't think we can give staff that direction as a body.
Mayor, I think there's something we're gonna have to do on this, and I think, uh, Counselor member Perez is, is correct, that we need to look at that, I don't know how much trash is out there, uh, on that, but I've noticed that some of the locations that, if you come down Country Club, on the right of way, city right of way there on the Eastman, uh, there's a whole line of trash that that business behind the Valero put there in front of it, and there's a concern about that, if it's gonna be picked up, as my, or as my, that, that it's not.
What, what, yeah, at this point, though, the topic we put on the agenda, so, the two council members put it on, but to give staff further direction, I mean, we need, we need more than just two, yeah, so, it's, I mean, it, 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 correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, I mean, it's not gonna be a formal vote today, but I think in order for staff proceed, uh, as, as, then it would, we, there needs to be some indication that at least, uh, four council members would, would like staff to look into that, for me.
Okay. I, I don't, so, I mean, I don't.
Well, I mean, my opinion, we're out there looking at the city on the residential side, if, if it's, I, I don't know if it would be too cumbersome for staff to, to give us a short write-up on, on debris on the commercial side, just to see what we're dealing with, uh, there's not that much when you drive down five eighteen that I've seen, and I'm not saying that, that I, I, I want to spend money on that, the, the commercial pickup, but at least let's look at it and see how we're gonna address it going forward, because it's just gonna sit there if we don't, and, um, I, I, I'd at least like to see how big an issue it is.
Well, look at it, it's spending money, I mean, tell our staff to go back and look at it, they're spending money on it, so, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, it, I, I think it's, if, if we've never had any policy beforehand, or, or if it's, if it's labeled as something that the private sector is supposed to take care of, I don't see why we put our hand in, I mean, we're, I think, we're, we're a month and a half out from the storm, and, yeah, we're, we're a month and a half out from the storm, and so, you know, I, I, that trash or whatever it is, the specific places may be gone by tomorrow, who knows, uh, but, you know, I, I, if any specific businesses have come to us, I, I would think that, at that point, we can see what we do, but if we're just generalizing and say, hey, staff, go take a look, I mean, we're spending money, we're spending Clay's time or whoever, you know, his staff's time, so, anyways, that, that's my opinion, you know. I appreciate that, I would say that, um, I, I, personally, I was reached out by a few businesses that, that asked, uh, asked me that, to, as to why they were, they were differentiated from residential at the time, I didn't have an answer, so that's how this, this kind of came up, at very least, you know, I don't know if I want to support us picking up commercial or not, 'cause I just don't have a, a whole enough picture, if we come back and staff looks into it, and, you know, as they're touring the city, um, as they're out there, and they come back and say, look, we've got five commercial businesses as of right now, we've talked to them and they, like, of, of those four are already getting, scheduled to get it picked up, so there's just one that's left, you know, is it okay, do we want to make the decision, let's go ahead and have that picked up, or if we, if they come back and say, there is a multitude of, of these businesses out there, we've spoken to a good sample set, they have no plans to pick it up, and we think it's gonna be a half a million dollars for us, then that would be a different decision, but, I, I don't feel like we have enough information to say, wholly, we're gonna wipe ourselves a responsibility to pick it up, at least that's my perspective, I appreciate that, that some, that, that some of y'all don't feel that way, I would just like to at least give staff direction to get, come back on a Thursday memo, or in a future council meeting and just say, here's what we think the encumbrance would be, here's what we think the fin, our financial obligation would be to take care of this, and then we make the decision from there, I think that's fair to the citizens.
We're gonna be down here Monday mo, next Monday, so why don't we let staff percolate this a little bit, and let us talk a little bit, and then let's talk about this again Monday.
Well, they, they, Mayor, with all due respect, staff has to still, before they can go forward, has to get, they at least, kind of a hint from four of us to say that this is something that four of us would, would.
Clay, you need a decision night?
Well, I think we've got three that have said that they're supportive of it, I think there's, there's two haven't spoken.
This was just a, this was just a discussion item to start off with.
Mayor, I, I take the point to me, if you want us to go back and, and, uh, survey and, and give you an assessment of what commercial is still out there, you know, that, that, I think that's what, uh, at least two or three were wanting, if you wanted to formalize that with four, um, you know, and, and, I'm not introducing any new information, but, the material that, uh, Trent and others put together, they did talk, just for your recollection and sharing for everybody, uh, there is some programs out there, maybe Trent, you can just touch on it real quick, that, that's what we'd shared, any commercial we come across, it's probably the best way to say it.
Okay, that okay with the counsel? Okay, is that okay with the council?
Hold on. I can find a mic that works. Thank you, Clay. Yeah, just a couple of things is, of course, we've talked a little bit about it. You know, the first option for businesses is if they have insurance that pays for the removal of anything. Anyone that has current existing service with waste management, they're contracted directly with waste management. They have, if they have a dumpster, that's another option for them. And then, of course, there's the Small Business Administration. They have disaster-type loans that they can go through as well. And if we were to even attempt to go through the process for reimbursement for these type of, for commercial properties through FEMA, the insurance and the Small Business Association loans would be the first two parameters that they would have to look at before we could move forward in that direction. So, I think at a minimum, we need to make sure those type of bases are covered. And it may be if the desire is for us to do that survey, at the same time, we're providing educational material to make sure that those folks know, you know, if they don't have insurance, then, you know, can they use their existing service? If not, have they looked into the low-interest loans or the loans through the Small Business Administration? And do an education as well as a survey, if that's the direction that we go in.
Counsel, any thought on that?
I think it's a good way to go. Mayor, I mean, you know, I remember when I was on council previously and we had Hurricane come through, that Waste Management actually came in and subsidized us to go and pick up trash for us out there and a lot of the debris. I don't know how many cubic yards it picked up, but it was quite a bit, which they didn't charge for doing that on there. And I did... Did you reach out to see if they would help with some of that? And if they got...
Not on this event because, for a bunch of reasons. But we did, we are aware, and as Trent mentioned, for the commercial, when they use waste management, if there's a dumpster, you know, theoretically, they could put some of the materials that are appropriate into that and that'd be covered with that debris.
Was that something Waste Management should look at? If they're, have a contract with the business and they have debris out there, is that something they're going to be able to pick it up?
I think we could ask them that pretty easily, so, yeah.
I think we just need, you know, to get the city cleaned up. I mean, you can set, go through this for months and months and still have trash out there and for long you can have road and drainage and all that sort of stuff. And I think, you know, we need to look at it and just make the determination. The whole guy out there, it may not be as much of what we're really thinking about, but then again, if it's not that many business, we can contact the business and find out when they're going to pick it up. Or what they're going to do.
You know, I don't want to get between three of your, it sounds like there's three, three if we were to come. We can fairly easily just give you sort of a brief note and just say, hey, we've noticed X number of commercial zones and we've already reached out to the chamber and shared with them the parameters for this SBA or the rules. And we'll make sure that they know about the SBA piece and, you know, come back to you in a couple of weeks on a Thursday and just say, hey, there's two left or there's 10 left or whatever that would be. And then you can go from there if that makes sense. Is that fair?
I think that's fair.
I think that's good enough. You know, we don't want to forget that a lot of the smaller businesses we have out here, they're taxpayers also. And so, in addition to that, they're creating sales tax and revenue comes into the city. And I think, you know, we need to stand up and take care of things like that. But let's find out first what the impact will be.
Yeah, I guess that's where I have a hard time with it. They are taxpayers in the city, but also too, they should have insurance that helps take care of this. But what makes this a little easier for me, knowing that they're able to use their dumpster that they currently have for their business to help get rid of some of the debris? So, I don't know if this is something that we need to go further with or this is just a message to the businesses to let them know all their options.
I still think it'd be good for us to take a look, see how many businesses we have or actually how much debris roughly that we have. And again, I'll say it again, they are taxpayers within the city. And we're using their revenue that comes in here. And also the sales tax that we get in here, and that's how we operate the city. And I think at some point in time, we need to go back with the taxpayers and help them out a little bit. If it's a small business and it's not that much debris out there, then something to be done, you know. Or if they go through and they say, well, we hadn't had time to do it, you know, but we'll have it, you know, cleaned up in the next two or three weeks, that's fine. But we'll find, you know, we'll find out no how.
I agree. I don't think there's anything to hurt getting more and better information so that we have the opportunity to make the decision. We may all come back and say, we're just not going to fit the bill on that. I'm not saying that I'm leaning one way or the other. I'm saying that there's just a lack of information for me to feel comfortable that the door is closed on this. I'd just like staff to go out and drum up a little bit more information and give us an opportunity to make a decision.
Want to take a vote, give direction?
Just to round out the discussion, I'm getting information that there, we have an estimated about 30 businesses out there that still have debris. So, that's what we'll be working with, is education and conversations.
So, Mayor, we're giving you debris pickup. So, as we go along the residential, we'll just add, you know, what the count is from what we observed for the 30 and if that goes down. And what we're doing is share the information out, if that's good enough. All right?
That's all we're adding.
I'm going to call a brief recess right at this point. We've got a public hearing coming up at 6:30. At 7, 6:20, 6:20.
Yeah, all of it's frozen, it's back there. In an hour?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get ready to open a public hearing for a series of zone changes. And what I'll do, let me tell you what the agenda is. It'll start off with me reading all of the areas that we will be considering. Then we'll hear from the staff. And then at that point, the citizen comments portion is when you have an opportunity to speak. Now, as you see, we have something like 30 people would like to speak. So, we have a three-minute option for you to, a window for you to present your case. So, be sure and put it together pretty carefully. And when you do, we're going to talk about one, two, three, four, five different areas. Areas A, C, I, L, and P. When you talk, be sure to tell us which one you're talking about so we can have some kind of idea of focus on what your concern is about a particular area that is being considered. So, with that type of guidance in advance, I think we'll be able to move through this without too much disruption. And we'll go through this as we proceed. So, let me open a public hearing of the City Council of Pearland for Monday, October the 9th, year 2017. I will call this council order. And the public hearings are item one on the agenda. First public hearing in the City Council of Pearland of annexation A, C, I, L, and P into the city limits. Area A being comprised of approximately 885 acres located north of Bexar County MUD 22 and east of County Road 564 and south of County Road 92 and west of County Road 48. We'll have it on map up after a few minutes. Area C is being comprised of approximately 18 acres north, located north of McCord Road of Budding Clear Creek at the northeast corner of nearby Country Place subdivision. Area I is being comprised of approximately 344 acres located north of South Belt Industrial Drive, west of Almeida School Road, and south of Beltway 8 and east of Foreign Market 521. Area L being comprised of approximately 1,002 acres located northeast of State Highway 35 between Dixie Farm Road and County Road 129. And Area P being comprised of approximately 260 acres located just south of Magnolia Road and just north of Bailey Road, west of Manville Road and east of Webster Drive and Deer Brook Court. That information in the record. And at this point, I will move then to staff review. And our staff will consist of, at this point, we will present to you the position that we have. And we'll have that, all that information on the record on the screen for you by areas that we're going to confront. So, Joel Hardy is going to be our presenter and live from staff review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, again, as you mentioned, we are here to host this public hearing. This is our first of two public hearings that will be taking place with regard to these proposed annexation areas. And want to talk about a few things that are pertinent to the overall discussion about the annexation procedures. One, of course, we want to recognize and demonstrate the annexation history as a historical growth of our city, as you can see as the map shows.
Yeah, I like that. Let's try to blow that dude up where we see it. There we go.
So, we want to talk about the historic growth, historical growth of Pearland annexation. It's certainly been a part of that history from our outgrowth as an original incorporated city in 1959. This map shows the progression of annexation areas that have constituted our growth in several different directions that ultimately make up the boundaries that we know as the City of Pearland today. These are annexation areas that we're discussing today were a part of our original extraterritorial jurisdiction that began in 1963. Most recently, with the updating of our comprehensive plan in 2015, we updated the annexation phasing as part of our comprehensive plan. And that further defined the total of 19 annexation areas that are in that plan now, areas A through S. They are areas that are in close proximity to our incorporated area, which is the City of Pearland existing boundaries. They do include areas that are in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ, and have multiple land use types. This year, we began to review that assessment and take into consideration the importance of carrying out some of the priorities in our comprehensive plan. And that has led us here today where we are proposing annexation of the five areas before you. The procedures associated with the annexation process are pretty much regulated at two levels. The local city charter, Article 1, Section 1.03 authorizes that we adjust our boundaries when necessary. And state law, of course, through the local government code, provides the requirements that we must adhere to when it comes to annexation procedures. Council on August 31st directed us to take into effect that requirement and directed us to pursue the annexation, to develop a service plan and host the public hearings and ordinance and adoption actions that we are engaging in right now. Local government code 43.005 is important to note, which limits our local annexation to about 10% of our total incorporated area. And we are with these properties and these tracks and these areas beneath that threshold. We do want to point out that a new annexation law went into effect or goes into effect December 1 of 2017 in the form of Senate Bill 6 that was signed by the governor into law in August and is passed into the 2017 Texas Legislature. And this dramatically changes the landscape of our boundary-expanding procedures. Our staff recommendation is that we do incorporate these lands as they provide for additional, more diverse tax base, assist us with some planned utility developments, mobility improvements, and future development throughout the city. And we do recommend that annexation prior to Senate Bill 6 effective date is the best interest of the overall Pearland community. The annexations that we are putting before council and the public are, of course, again, defined in our comprehensive plan and are broken up into two areas. We've got some short-term priority annexation areas that were defined as annexation area A and annexation area C. And there are three mid, medium-term priority annexation areas in the form of I, L, and P. This map shows those areas as they relate to the current City of Pearland boundary map. As you can see, that they are all in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. To launch the process, we provided property owner with notices on September 1 of this year. And in accordance with state law, made sure we got the information from the local tax appraising authorities, which are the Bexar County Appraisal District and the Houston Harris County Appraisal District's property records. We've provided additional specifics about our annexation activities on the annexation webpage, portion of the City of Pearland's website, which is located at pearlandtx.gov backslash annexation. And at that location, we have several maps, the compendium of council actions that have taken place, drafts of the service plan, calendars, and other information important to the process. We also have an email address that's set up so that members of the public can contact us specifically about their questions and concerns. We've also provided with, provided our local paper of record, which is the Reporter News and on the city website, notices about this public hearing. Those were posted on September 20th and subsequently on September 27th for the first and second public hearings that we are bringing before council. Some descriptions about the areas in detail. Annexation area A is, again, a short-term annexation area. It's made up of approximately 885 acres. Again, the general description, it's located north of MUD 22, east of County Road 564, south of County Road 92, and west of County Road 48. There are approximately 87 residences located in that area with an estimated population of 239. This is a map of the annexation area and it defines the tracks and boundaries that we'll be annexing this year. The current and future land use of this area is low-density residential. Annexation area C is a small set of parcels, approximately three parcels, that are also short-term annexation areas. They make up approximately 18 acres. And this is located just adjacent to the Country Place subdivision north of McCord Road of Budding Clear Creek. There are no residences and no standing population in that area. Here's a map of that area and its boundaries. As you can see, it's close to the Country Place subdivision. And the current and future land use plan for that annexation area is, again, low-density residential. Annexation area I is one of the medium-term annexation areas. It's approximately 344 acres located on the northwest side of the city boundaries at north of South Belt Industrial Drive, west of Almeida School Road, south of Beltway 8, and east of FM 524. There are approximately 11 residences with a population of about 30 people. And here's a map of that area as well. The current and future land use plan for that area is light industrial. Annexation area L is the second of the... Annexation area L is the second of the medium-term annexation areas. It's approximately a thousand acres. It's located northeast of State Highway Thirty-Five between Dixie Farm Road and County Road One Twenty-Nine, and this is the current location of the Pearland Regional Airport, and there are approximately thirty-two residences with an estimated population of eighty-eight. And this is a map of the annexation area L. This is one of the areas that has a more complex land use area. There are medium-to-low-density residential, airport, recreation and open space, and light industrial land uses in that area. And lastly, annexation area P is another medium-term annexation area. It's approximately two hundred and sixty acres, south of Magnolia Road, just north of Bailey Road, also west of Manville Road, and east of Weber Drive and Deerbrook Court. There are approximately fifty-seven residences with an estimated population of one hundred and fifty-four. This is a map of area P. It's just located just north of Bailey Road. The current and future land use plan for annexation area P is low-density residential. An important part of the annexation process is that the city provide a service plan for those areas, and their, the early action program and capital improvement sections of that service plan provide that we provide police protection, fire protection and prevention, emergency medical services, solid waste and recycling collection, and a variety of operations and maintenance characteristics, which include waste, water, facilities, water, roads and streets, public parks, playgrounds, and swimming pools. Some of the additional services that the annexation areas will become available to use are our libraries, our health and code enforcement activities, and building permits We have historically provided many services to these areas, and most of which, of course, are your public safety services, and we've put a map together of some of the historical emergency services we provided to the areas. So if you look at this map, it shows those emergency services to annexation area A, where fire, police, and emergency medical services are concerned. And this is the same for area I, area L, and area P. Some of those totals, we've served those areas with police services thirteen times, fire protection twenty-one times, and emergency medical services a hundred and twenty-one times over the course of the period going back to our adoption of the annexation phasing. Another thing to point out is that the agricultural land use properties may qualify for an exemption, and they are subject to a development agreement that they would enter into with the city, and that would give them a five-year exemption from annexation, which would expire at that five years, and would be, they would be incorporated at that time, and their annexation exemption also expires at the time that they apply for a building permit. So any improvements they attempt to make is an automatic petition for annexation. We've looked at the agricultural land used by area, and for area A, there are estimated eleven agricultural properties, eight in L, and five in area P. This is a sample estimated property tax for a home value of a hundred and thirty thousand based on the recently adopted tax rate of point six-eight-five-oh-five-nine. A tax bill on an annual basis would result in an eight-hundred-and-ninety-dollar payment. We've also looked at the appraised values of the area to provide information about the property tax base expansion that these areas would provide, and this slide provides that information. In total, these areas represent about a hundred and seventy-five million in appraised values, which would provide a total annual property tax revenue of an estimated one-point-one million dollars. Some of the future calendar, calendar activities that we have scheduled, of course, the second public hearing will take place October the sixteenth at the same time and location, six-thirty PM. November the sixth and November the thirteenth are the first and second readings of the annexation ordinance that are scheduled to go before council. Just want to point also back to the information that's on our website at pearlandtx.gov/annexation, where we have general and area-specific annexation information. We have a set of frequently asked questions, and also GIS maps and other information that we'll continue to update as things progress. But that is the central repository of information that citizens should go to get updated information, and they can also contact staff directly if necessary. So this concludes the staff portion of the presentation related to the annexation areas. We'll pass back the balance to council to administer the public comments section, but I do want to help us control the public comments if necessary, and I've parceled out the discussion in a way that segments it off by annexation area. So Mayor, it's your leisure. I can assist with that process.
Thank you, Joel. I think that was a good presentation. When you, when you come up to speak, please give your name and address because we need to make that a part of our minutes of our, of our public hearing. And I'm assuming if you do, having, I'm assuming it's your name, your farm has been filled out and is in this stack here. I haven't pulled out, pulled out individuals yet, but because of the mass of them, I'd like for you to keep it about three minutes, and I think that you could make an effective comment, and then within that timeframe. And our city secretary, stick your hand up high, he's got the clock, and so we're going to run a clock on you as we, as we go through the process here. So one...
Just, just real quick, Joel, were you saying it'd be better if we did it just public comments per area?
We've been asked to kind of help coordinate that, if that's at council's...
I think it'd be better if we could do that. I'm sure yours is mixed in here somewhere, and if it hasn't, if it isn't in here, be sure and fill out a form and make, make it get to our city secretary before you leave to make sure that, and I'll ask you that question when you get up there. Did you fill out a form? Yes, it's probably in this stack. So, and we're going to conform this to those speakers that will live in area A.
Correct, Mayor, and that's the area that is comprised of eight hundred and eighty-five acres located north of Brazoria County Mud Twenty-Two, east of County Road Five Sixty-Four, south of County Road Ninety-Two, and west of County Road Forty-Eight, and it's in the southwest quadrant of the city.
Okay, I'm going to have the mayor pro temp do part of this, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Have his first, first speaker.
Mayor? If I could, just another ground rule, as this is a public hearing, council's not permitted to dialogue. We will keep notes, and if there's, you know, questions that come up or, you know, themes, we'll try to incorporate that either on the website or other communications, and one advantage of this process is there's another public hearing mandatory in two weeks, so, you know, we can pay attention, but council's not allowed to go back and forth.
Yeah. And that's important, we're not permitted in a public hearing because of the legality of it, that we cannot dialogue with you on that or converse with you in any way. Just, we're here to receive your testimony into the record. So I'm ready for the first here, first speaker in section A, area A. And one of them here, or you found it, it's Gerald Hauser. Gerald, yeah, he's coming up. We're going to go through here and try to pull these out. So far, there's one speaker. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Gerard Hauser.
Give us your name and address there for starters.
Twenty-eight oh seven Honeysicle Rochearen, seven-seven-five-eight-three. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Basically, went it on record that I'm expressing my opposition to the annexation with Pearland. We've lived out in our area for thirty-nine years, and we've, we've done just fine, and I would just as soon keep doing just fine, just as, as we are. And I know that there's no dialogue for this, but I'm, I know that y'all put in some, a nice road on County Road Forty-Eight, and it's, up until our last hurricane, we never flooded. The road did flood. We had County Road Forty-Eight, County Road Fifty-Nine for thirty-nine years, and in the flood of nineteen seventy-nine, when Manville and Alvin did flood, our roads were still passable. They are no longer passable. The roads work great now with the new development, as long as they don't get rain on them. And so, and I was a direct result of that from this last hurricane. So I don't know, I'm not fond of the ETJ as well. I know that's already been imposed on us, and I don't really know what else to say other than thank you for allowing me to speak and expressing my opposition. Thank you.
Apparently, that was the only A that had applied. Were there anybody from District A that would like to speak? Okay. What's, what's next area here? Next section is section C.
Yes, Mayor, and this the area that is adjacent to the northeast of Country Place subdivision, north of McCard Road, and that abuts Clear Creek. We may not have any speakers here.
Okay. And going through this stack, we did not find any C speakers, but if there's one of you that would like to speak and present a testimony representative of that district, the podium is yours. And I think probably there is no, no speaker for that particular one, okay?
So Mayor, we'll move on to area I, and this is a three hundred and forty-four acre area, north of South Belt Industrial Drive, west of Almeda School Road, south of Beltway Eight, and east of FM Five Twenty-One, and it's in the northwest quadrant of the city.
We only had one, one, one forum, and that was Michael Farson. Yeah, and this is for I, you also put I and L on there, but this is for I only.
Yes, sir, but if I could address both, I probably in a little bit different situation than most here.
Okay.
I'm afraid I am being impacted, if you will, on both ends of the city. I am being impacted on I as well as L, and what I have prepared this evening kind of brings those together. So if you don't mind, I would like to address both of those at the same time.
Okay, why don't you do it for I and L too as well, okay?
Okay, my name is Michelle Fauzon. Yes, it's Michelle Fauzon. I live at seven-zero-seven Westfield, Brentwood, Texas, seven-seven-five-four-six. I have lived in Pearland for approximately twenty-three years. I've raised my two children here. I am one of the owners of Broadway FM Five Eighteen Business Center, which was built in two thousand and six in the City of Pearland. It's an office warehouse complex which is zoned as general business. I am here this evening to represent area I, specifically the South Belt Industrial Park, where I own fifteen acres that includes ninety thousand square feet of manufacturing facility and employs over a hundred employees. I am also here to represent area L, which is the Pearland Regional Airport area, where I just completed building a propeller shop and small aircraft hangars. I am here as a concerned, tax-paying citizen and a business owner. As you are all aware, our area has been hard hit by Harvey, which impacted our area specifically on August twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. On August the twenty-ninth, the City of Pearland sent letters out to various areas regarding annexation. I hope that you personally were not impacted by this, like so many in our community, and if you weren't impacted, I'm sure you were out helping those of them that were impacted around our community as so many others were. I hope that you were out helping the others recover from such a historical event. The timing on these letters could not have been worse. We did not have mail for over a week. Our primary concern was getting our homes in order, our children back in school, and our employees back at work. We are being forced to address an annexation. The city knows that area I, South Belt, is a developed industrial park, established by covenants recorded in the deed records in nineteen ninety-six. I will assume that the city is aware of this, that this is not a residential area. Area I, the South Belt Industrial Park, was included in Pearland's twenty-fifteen comprehensive annexation plan, was it not? Under this twenty-fifteen comprehensive annexation plan, Pearland did not plan to annex South Belt Industrial Park until twenty-twenty-five, correct? Pearland's twenty-seventeen budget allocates nothing towards the provisions in any of the services for area I or area L, does it? Many of the owners of area I and L have not been notified of Pearland's annexations for some of the reasons I have discussed earlier regarding the timing of Harvey. Doesn't Pearland have to provide fair notice and an opportunity to be heard before annexation? Why are the annexed areas I and L being rushed? Is it because of the new law effective December first, SB six, which would require citizens to vote on the annexation? As you saw earlier, it is, in area I, it is estimated that there are alone six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in additional tax revenue to the city. Area I, excuse me, area L, I believe it's a hundred and forty-five. Could you please explain what economic development plans, what capital improvements, such as water, sewer, when is ample fire protection going to be started in these areas if annexed?
Twelve years.
As I explained earlier, area I is an industrial area. Does the City of Pearland have the fire protection for an industrial area or a hazmat unit?
Are you approaching completion?
I'm doing the best I can, sir.
We'd like...
The airport is...
You extended your time for six minutes for both of them.
Hazmat unit, okay, I would like to start my paragraph over if I could. Does the City of Pearland have the fire protection for an industrial area or a hazmat unit to respond to the industrial area that contains buildings that contain combustible gases, or are they prepared for a large fire explosion and fire? In area L, will the City of Pearland be ready for an aircraft going down and the possible damages it could cause? The airport is already seen by other airports as having the reputation of the Wild, Wild West due to the small aircraft going down. Fortunately, these aircraft accidents have been limited to the aircraft, the pilot, and very limited property damage. Where are the zoning plans for the annexed area? Does the city have plans to purchase the airport in area L if annexed? Council, there are already an exempt, council, there are already an exempt to annex, there was already an attempt, I'm sorry, to annex area L back in twenty-twelve, in twenty-ten. I would like for you to review your reasons for not annexing that area compared to now. I live two blocks from that area, and nothing has changed. Nothing to make this advantageous for the, advantageous for the citizens or the City of Pearland. No additional services are available. I promise.
Thank you.
I have, I have three paragraphs, okay? Just bear with me. I do cover two areas, sir. I am trying to get through this timely.
Okay, I'm going to give you a little bit, but I may have to steal it from somebody else.
Yes, sir, I understand. In the Pearland Journal dated September twenty-seventh, it addresses the annexation that we are here tonight to discuss. On page two, it states, and I quote, "This annexation will help the city improve its ability to manage growth and public service levels." Could you please explain what does that mean? Gentlemen, I believe this is nothing more than a land grab. I ask you to put yourselves in our shoes. How would you feel if you received a thirty percent tax increase for nothing? In my twenty-three years of raising my family here in Pearland, I have seen the city grow way beyond its means.
Why don't we stop at the end of this sentence?
You have annexed numerous areas in the past that you have not, cannot, and will not be able to provide essential services to, and now you're asking for more. Why? As taxpayers, even the IRS and state government giving people additional time to file their twenty-seventeen taxes due to Hurricane Harvey.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your presentation. There are more Is, but there are a bunch of Ls.
So, we'll move on to public comments for annexation Area L, which is the airport area, approximately a thousand acres located northwest of State Highway thirty-five.
Okay. Gus Rodriguez. Gus Rodriguez, there he is, coming up here. Thank you for being here, man.
Yes, sir. My name is Gus Rodriguez. I live at eighteen double oh seven County Road one-thirty-two. I also own property inside the airport, and I'm here to categorically state that I am completely opposed to the annexation of this area or any of the other areas, because it really doesn't matter whether you're in Area L or any of the other areas. The thing is, if you guys want to do an honest thing, and that is abide by the democratic policies of this country, then you guys should allow the people who are being annexed to vote on whether they want to be annexed, since you guys are providing so many, so many benefits for the citizenry, and as explained by that gentleman earlier, then people are gonna want to do this, right? But no, you want to basically shove it down our throats before December first, because after December first, you are required by law to have a vote, and it has to be seventy-five percent in favor. Okay, that's the number-one thing. Secondly, I have noticed, after your first attempt to annex in two thousand and twelve, soon after that, maybe six months, eight months or so, I've noticed the fire department coming through, and I go, oh, what are they doing? Because they can't possibly do anything. If my house catches on fire right now, by the time the fire department gets the message and comes to my house, all they're gonna do is watch my house burn. You can't possibly provide any real services over there. The Sheriff's Department already provides police. We don't need, we don't need police. We don't need streets being paid, because the county does a better job than the city does. Soon as you pass the border between county and city, the potholes begin to increase number. Now, there's so many things. I'm just completely opposed, completely opposed to this. I have property inside the airport, which will be subject to your new little regulations, and it's uncanny how you state if you, if you live in an area over here, as soon as you apply for a, for a permit, you're already accepting, accepting the annexation. So, it's like, we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. If you don't say anything, we get annexed. If we do want to improve something, we get annexed. It's just, it's like we're in a cycle, a vicious cycle of government, big government, trying to, just like the lady said, trying to get money, money and just a land grab, just like she said, because you're not gonna get a lot of money as your numbers posted up their state. You can't possibly get the amount of money that is necessary to put in place the things that you say you're gonna do, but you won't do. You're not gonna do those things. You're gonna, you're gonna wait ten, fifteen years before you begin a process of actually, it's gonna be a plan, a plan to do something which means absolutely nothing. So, that's basically, I just want to state categorically that I am against this, one-hundred percent. You can't provide the, even though you've had fire department just stroll by there, they can't do anything. You know, they show up, and they can't do anything. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. I have Mike and Marty Ratschiff. Mike and Marty? Is that Mike coming up?
Yeah.
Okay. R-A-T-H.
J.
J-E.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Mike Ratsch, sixteen-seven.
Okay.
Ratsch.
Good, thank you for being here.
Sixteen-seven thirty-two, County Road one-twenty-seven.
One-twenty-seven, yep.
One-twenty-seven, right on, in L. I'm just here to state that I'm against the annexation. I do believe that the law is kind of forcing this upon you guys, but I just don't think it's the right way for you guys to do business. Again, as stated previous two speakers, I think it's not worth it. I don't think we as homeowners in that area are gonna gain anything by it. We're gonna be taxed more by it. And so, I would say that I'd ask you to vote against it, and I speak against it. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
But I appreciate your comment. I got the Mike part of it right, but I'm trying to figure out the rest of it. At twelve-twenty-nine County Road one-thirty, Mike Haris?
Mike Elliott.
H-A, maybe it's Harris, maybe that's it.
Mike Elliott or Mike Harris?
Harris.
Are you on sixteen-twenty-nine?
Sixteen-twenty-nine County Road one-thirty.
Yeah. It's, what is that? Is that Harris?
Yes, sir. It's Mike Harris, sixteen, yes, sir, sixteen-twenty-nine County Road one-thirty. My wife, Jody, and I live at that residence. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you taking the minute to listen to our concerns. I understand from staff that you have operational plans for improvements in this area. I was involved in the annexation process in two thousand and twelve. At that time, staff and the city could not give us any specifics as to what improvements were going to be made and when they were going to be made. I am asking you tonight, you've heard from other people with the same concern, I'm asking you tonight to specifically address that question. I know there can be no decor, discourse between us, but we would like an answer. What is your master plan for water and sewer and trash facility services to the airport? What is the plan, and when are you going to do it? You have an obligation to us. We're making an investment in the city. Anytime we make an investment, we have an obligation, we have a right to know what those improvements are going to be. As mentioned previously tonight, we just experienced a historical flood, a thousand-year flood. The timing of this event could not be worse. And that brings up what was previously brought up tonight. Why is there such a rush to do this if it wasn't for the state law changing? If you were so confident and so sure of this action, then why would we be rushing as a city to try to grab our land? I think you have an obligation to answer us and all the other citizens of the city of Pearland, because you are increasing a liability for the city by incorporating these areas, which is going to take away from the rest of your constituents. The truth of the matter is, you don't have enough resources to meet the needs of the city as it is. I would like to say that I respectfully am not for this. I hope to have some concrete answers from staff and the city as to these questions. Thank you for time and your consideration.
Good. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Mike Elliott. There he is. Hello, Mike.
Thank you for the opportunity to have the voice of my concern tonight. My name is Michael Elliott. I live at eighteen-fifteen County Road one-thirty, which is basically right adjacent to the Cloverfield or Pearland Regional Airport. I own Elliott Aircraft Service, which is a general aviation repair facility, and I have T hangars that I rent out, and I've been there since nineteen ninety. In, I think it's already been mentioned, in twenty-ten, twenty-twelve, the city had the opportunity to annex the airport at that time, and so many residents appeared to a meeting and raised so much cane and argued about it, that the city at that time, y'all voted against annexing it, for whatever reason. The economic council has also done a determination, looked at the whole area here on some of the master plans, and they determined that it would not be economically feasible to annex the airport. Are you aware also that if you do annex the airport, that there's certain fire prevention and fire equipment stuff that has to be available in case you do have an airplane fire? I believe the only reason that you're doing it now is because the state is taking, the state law is taking effect and allow residents to vote on what they want to do, if they want to be annexed in this area. If you really care, why don't you put this off until in December and let the residents make a vote, see if they want to be annexed? Also, I looked at your annexation plan at your website, and there's, there's nothing on your website that offers anything that I need or anything that I want. There's no sewer facility, there's no water facility. We have police and county sheriff protection now. We don't need anything. I've been there since nineteen ninety, and I don't see that there's any Pearland services that you're offering that I need. And another thing that I'm concerned about is such short notice, and I think the whole reason is only because the state law came into effect, which has already been mentioned before. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. And one more L is, we also go through the stack, and for some more input, we have some Is that have shown up too, so I'll go back and pick up some Is. Jeff Brennan. Thank you for being here tonight, Jeff.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Brennan. I live at one-six-nine-three-zero, County Road one-twenty-seven. I'm gonna ask you several questions, and you have enough staff, the reason why you want to annex section, Area L. I'm gonna hope you'll provide me and my neighbors these answers. First of all, I'll give you some reasons not to annex us. The city has annexed areas twenty years ago and has yet been able to provide services to these areas with water, sewer, or infrastructure. For example, Stone, Max, Roy, Brookside, Wells Road, and Hughes Ranch Road. There are needed maintenance. Adamo Road in this area, you won't even pave. Your proposed annexation does not include the road I live on, County Road one-twenty-seven, that we live on, nor does include neighbors across the street. The city wants to be in the airport business. Previously, the city has conducted studies showing there is no economic viability to the city in owning and/or operating Pearland Regional Airport. Four, it took the city seventeen years for city managers and a generation of councils to build and complete Bailey Road, and I'm witnessing the same on McCarrick Road and other city projects. You didn't annex the residence on Bailey Road until Bailey Road was almost complete. The reasons I've been given by city council members, city council members and staff is because of Senate Bill Six, because our hands are tied, or the city is losing one million dollars a year for fire and police protection in the ETJ. These are not viable reasons. You have no plan for our area. So, I'd like to ask you these questions. First of all, were all proper legal means followed to inform the residents of this annexation? Because on my letter, there was no time stated. I had to ask what time this meeting was going to be. Does that require the law? Two, has the airport residents, management, and/or owners requested this annexation? If so, is there already an agreement in place between the city and the airport management? Has a recent study been performed on the economic viability of the airport? If so, may I request a copy? Is the city purchasing the airport? If you are purchasing the airport, there are FAA regulations that have to be followed and monitored. I've spoken with the FAA when previous city managers and city council wanted to annex the airport or take over the airport, and that would take all my backyard cleared of trees. Has a PEDC been approached about funding the purchase or funding of infrastructure on the airport or development therefor? What zoning are you considering around the airport? This will affect our home values. Does your water and wastewater infrastructure have the capacity to handle what has been annexed already by the city and what is in the proposed annexation area? I'd like to ask for the calculations and capacities of these services. Have city services already been promised to the airport manager and/or developer or owners of the airport? If so, may I request a copy of this agreement? Do you have a timeline of when the city services are going to be provided to Area L? Has the city of Pearland staff, council, administration asked for, applied for, requested, or received from TechSCOT FAA funds for study, for airport study and/or expansion, or the runway expansion prior to this annexation proposal? In closing, I would say that the city has enough issues that they have not addressed to date, and certainly do not have the funds to purchase the airport. So, until they can bring other projects to completion, they have already stated, have viable proof of how they would benefit from annexing the residents in Section L, and can show they would be not, would not be discriminating against residents they have previously annexed and not followed through to provide city services they were promised over twenty years ago. I would encourage them to do more research on the benefits of this annexation and provide the city to ensure legally addressed everything in a manner they should. The city needs to make sure they're doing what is best, in the best interest for the city of Pearland and all the citizens of Pearland in which they are elected to serve. They need to make this decision in an ethical manner and ensure the legalities of the proposed annexation have fully been vetted. Ask yourself a few simple questions prior to make this decision on behalf of the city and the people you elected you to office. First, is it the truth?
I appreciate your comments so far, and thank you. You exceed the timeframe considerably.
Is it fair to all concerned? Will build goodwill and better friendships, will be beneficial to all concerned, and not to cover a budget shortfall? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. To the later rivals for I, Jason Smith.
Hang on one second, sir. Hold on. Some folks only put a number down instead of actually putting a letter, and so, you're P?
What is this?
He's in Area P.
Okay, these are Ps, okay.
Jack Callaway?
L.
L? Okay.
Okay, then I have a.
Callaway.
Are you Callaway?
He's Callaway.
Okay. Why don't we go to Callaway?
Somebody put these numbers down instead of this district.
County Road one-twenty-seven, one-seven-zero-zero-four. I moved my home on County Road one-twenty-seven four years ago. Moved out of the city. I loved it out there, because it was like living out in the country where I'm at now. I also moved away from HOAs and mud districts. Everybody here knows, including yourselves, that this is nothing but a, this annexation is nothing but a land grab and a money grab. I moved there to be left alone, and I want the city of Pearland to leave me alone. Thank you.
Actually, it wasn't I, it was Annex. Do you have one called Annex?
Colleen?
We didn't know we were supposed to put down the area.
I know. That's fine.
I never got, Beeson?
Are you L or P?
What, are you?
L, okay.
Oh, that's L, okay. Okay, get up there and talk.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Haley Beeson. I live at one-seven-zero-one-eight County Road one-twenty-seven. I'm in Area L. Like many here, I am very opposed to the annexation. And, you know, a lot of people have moved to get out. You'll see families having campfires and all the sorts of things that you can't do in the city, in city limits. And so, the, the costs to the city to run all the utilities out to us, they're not gonna get that back in tax dollars. It's gonna cost the city a lot. And we don't want to be in the city. It's gonna cost the city a lot. I don't know who benefits from this, but, but I do not want to be annexed. And also, I hope that this slideshow is going to be available. It's Club this day. A lot of people can't make it, so it would be wonderful if this was available to all the people who couldn't come today. Thanks. Thanks.
I appreciate that. And I think Mrs. Beeson also spoke, didn't she? Haley Beeson?
I was Jane.
Oh, Jane, okay.
Jane Beeson.
Okay, good.
Yeah, she, Jane Beeson.
Okay. You're the Jane part.
I'm Jane.
Good. Thank you for being here.
Thanks. Okay, I'm Jane Beeson. I live at County Road, 17018, County Road 127. I've lived out there for about 20 years. I moved out so I could bring my horses with me. I do worry how all of this will affect, you know, my horse and chicken keeping and all the things that people like to do outside of the city limits. I am opposed to annexation. I don't think it benefits, it certainly doesn't benefit the people who live in the area. We'll pay taxes for services we don't have, I mean, services we already have. I question whether, you know, just as many other people did. I question whether Pearland could provide those services in a timely fashion anyway. And I think it's also a hard thing for small business owners on the airport. I've been told by several that annexation would greatly increase their cost of doing business. So I don't think I can say anything better than all the people who spoke before me. Thank you for listening.
So if this wraps up area L, we'll move on to area P, which is...
What, are you, are you in area L?
Yes.
Are you Maurice?
Which some of these, they just put numbers down without telling what the district is. What is your name?
Mark Allen.
If you will, I'll let you speak and fill out a form.
I did already.
Yep.
All right, it's Mark Allen, M-A-R-K-A-L-L-E-N, 17626 Airfield Lane, Pearland 77581. I own four park properties on the airport. I'm totally against the annexation. I just have one question. People have come up with some excellent questions this evening. I agree with all the questions. I want to know whether you can answer them by the next meeting in writing so that we can see your answers, and if you cannot, I do believe it's illegal for you to go ahead with this annexation. Thank you.
Good. We haven't found, we haven't found a form, so if you don't mind filling out a new form and just, and give it to City Secretary, that'll work. Okay, we're moving into... Oh, you found it, huh?
I didn't have my glasses.
Okay, yeah. All right. When you get through, let me have that.
I had already. So Charles Williams, I live at 1627 County Road 130. And I think if you had to summarize this, and I could spend three minutes doing it, it would be, why can't we vote? And that's really it. I don't understand why we don't have the right to vote if the law was placed for us to vote and it's only six weeks away. Why not let us? I mean, what's wrong?
Give it, give it to him. I appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Okay, we have, you just finished the area P, I believe, didn't you?
Moving into P. So we'll move into area P, Mayor, and that's the area comprised of 260 acres just north of Bailey Road, west of Manville, east of Weber Drive and Gibrook Court. Area P.
Okay. Thank you. Starting off with Glenn Evans, Eichenhoff. Thank you for being here.
My name's Glenn Einkoff. I'm not going to sit up here and beat a dead horse, you know? I hope y'all don't sit here and try to beat a dead horse down our throats. I'm against the, against it. Y'all know it, we should vote on it, and I'm going to go ahead and give my time because I know this gentleman in the red field has a long one to go.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you. I have a Jason Smith with a P, is that you? Okay. We begin to unravel this thing a little here. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you for seeing me. My name's Jason Smith. I live on 5007 McKnight Road, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I live on a street that approximately has 50 acres with eight homes on it. We don't have city services, and I kind of disagree with the gentleman here. I've lived there a long time. This land has been in our family for 45 years. I have never seen a Pearland policeman on that street. I've never seen an ambulance. I've never seen a fire truck. I've seen sheriffs, but, you know, we don't have city services. I've been in engineering for almost 40 years. I know the cost of what it takes to put in city services, and I propose that it's economically unfeasible for the city of Pearland to provide services for, you know, thousands of acres with approximately five, if you add it up, it's approximately 500 residents. It's just not feasible. So, and they did a proposal for taxes on a homestead that was $130,000. I challenge everybody to find a home in Pearland that costs $130,000. It's probably more like $300,000. So you can triple that $900 to, you know, approximately $2,700. And, and that's what we're going to be paying in additional taxes for no services. You know, I don't need anybody to pick up my trash. I pay for my own trash. They'll pick up anything I can drag to the curbside. I doubt that the city of Pearland will do that. I have a well that's got the best water. It's 400 foot deep, got the best water you'll ever drink. I've got my own sewer. I don't need the city of Pearland to annex me, and I implore on you gentlemen, you know, to understand, like I said, thousands of acres, 500 residents, it does not make sense to me, you know, if you plan on providing the city services, how you will pay for it. I just don't understand it. So there again, and, and remember, if you do annex us, you're going to have a lot of angry voters on your hands.
Bill Brummett. Bill Brum, there he is. Thank you for being here tonight, Bill.
How y'all doing? Thank you for having us, Mayor. Bill Brummett, 3441 County Road 89, 1.8 miles south of here. I moved here a long time ago. What I wanted to talk about, though, the other people have kind of covered. I went and this, some of the, I didn't get a letter. My son-in-law got one, my neighbors got one, I didn't get one. So I was waiting, I thought, amen, I don't get one, this is good. But I called Joel and Joel said, yeah, you're on the list. That was too bad, but Joel's been good. He emailed me a lot of stuff. He emailed me 17 pages, all the stuff that y'all did in 2015. You took a lot of time, took a lot of effort to go through and determine how you're going to annex people and the proper procedure you're going to do with it, and the things that he presented tonight have errors in it. Does that matter to you? Because it does, because he says area P is a medium district. We're not. We were long-term. In 2015, in August 21st of 2015, area P was on the 10-plus year plan. August 15th, 2017, we went to a six-day annexation plan. Six days. You know how I know that? Because the program that you put out was dated August 21st. Six days you decided to annex us, and in six days you didn't do your homework. He says that we've got 57 residents in area P. We don't. You know how I know that? I went and looked. Your paper says you did it on current information. You know what current information is? You go out and you drive the neighborhood. You talk to the people, you ask them, hey, who's this? Where's that? You ask people, is this your land? Is this what is, they said, this map's not even right with the plots that are on it. It's not right. I sold this property to them 20 years ago and they built on it. It's just not right in the county. So there's not 57, and 99 seems to be your magic number, right, Joel? You can't, you can speak, they can't, but 99 seems to be your number. And I look at area P and the maps and the plots that are on there, and there's 90 that I can count. You give me a drone and I might find the other nine. Out of 119, I might find the other nine. And you give us three minutes. You need to consider this, Mayor. I'm looking at, according to Joel's figure, before you raised the taxes last meeting, $1,000 a year. Say I'm going to live here another 25 years. $25,000 you're wanting to pin me with. Now, 45, 43056 says in subcom, some, some letter B, it says that you got to have the water and the sewer in in two and a half years. You read that? Two and a half years it says that. Have y'all read it? I've read it. I've studied it, I've looked at it. Not happy about it, guys. I don't want to be annexed. Please don't annex me. I moved out here, I started coming out here in 1985. I was chasing a woman and I was out here in 85. When I came out here in 1985, it's like Pearville. It's Pearville. You had to go to the east side of the railroad tracks to get anything to eat. Amen? Y'all were here. Some of you were here. Mayor, you were the mayor here probably then. We moved down here in 2000. In 2000, we moved down here and it was Pearland, but the streets were still narrow, the lights were few, you knew the cops and they knew you, right? That's how it was. It was Pearland. I don't know what causes you councilmen to think we want to be a big city. We didn't do that. We moved from Houston to get away from the big city. We don't want to be a big city. You're, you're turning us into, he yielded me two minutes, Mayor, that's my son-in-law. He yielded me two minutes. You're, you're making it become parametropolis, and we don't want to be parametropolis. We moved down here so the dogs could roam around without a fence. I live in the city, I live in the county, I've got my own well, I've got my own sewer, there's lots of stuff in here I'll be getting with legal, but I don't think you're correct on 43.056, 43.053. Both of those are statutes that you quote in here, but you're not living by them. Please, country lives matter.
Jose Crebs, C-R-E-P-S, it looks like. Jeffrey, good to see you tonight. Thank you.
Jeff Crebs, sorry, Jeff Crebs. I live at 4501 Arnold, which is next door to Bill. So yes, he's like that all the time. Okay, I'll keep it short and sweet because I don't have a lot of details, but I have a water, we have a well, we have an aerobic system. Says you're going to be responsible for that, so I'm going to pay a lot of taxes in the next couple of years for you to annex me, not provide me anything. So if my well or my aerobic system goes out, is the city going to service that? And if they're not going to service it and I got to afford that cost, now am I being taxed, now I have to pay for my own water and sewer anyway. I'm doing it now, I mean, I'm going to have to get it fixed. And when you do finally get water and sewer, and hopefully not 17 years, because it's a hell of a lot of tax money, you know? I'm a city employee for the city of Houston, I don't make a lot of money. I make just enough to be happy, and I'm good with that. So all this extra money that's going to come out of my pocket and my wife's pocket to afford taxes that I'm not getting anything for is going to hurt. And it's not just going to hurt me, I'm sure it's going to hurt a lot of these residents. So basically, when you do tie in the water and sewer in 17 years, or whenever it is, it's going to come out, how much is that going to cost me to get tied into the water and sewer for the city, on top of the taxes that I've already paid for the next 15 years? So that's just, I want to know. I mean, I need some details, because it seems to me like I'm going to be in a lot of money for nothing, and I personally don't like to pay a lot of money for nothing. I'm sure you don't either.
I appreciate that. Got one that's from Jackie Gortick. Jackie Gortick? Yeah. If I pronounced that correctly. Help me on that pronunciation a little better.
Jackie Golick.
Okay.
4825 Ethel. Like a lot of these folks here, I'm really concerned about my 68-year-old mother who's retired, that lives there and already pays a lot in land taxes, is going to be double or tripling her taxes and how she's going to come up with that money. You guys will end up taking her home from her? That's a, that's a huge concern. I already have a grandparent and a father that I support, you know? It's not, it's just not fair to us. I don't think you guys should be just taking our homes, taking our land without getting permission from us, you know, to vote whether we want to do it or not. It's not right. My parents have been here since 84. They came out to the country because they wanted to get their kids away from the city. And now you're forcing us to be in it. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you. Gary Wilson. There he is. Thanks for being here tonight, Gary.
My name is Gary Wilson. I live at 4603 Mead Road, and I am very opposed to this annexation, and I think we all understand that. I don't think there's anybody in this chamber tonight that is for it. So what I would like to remind everybody, to take a good look at these people's faces and their names, and make sure if you do get annexed, that you start a ground-root effort to make sure none of these people is ever elected again.
Looks like Maurice Davis, one here with nothing on it. Is it Maurice Davis? Maurice on Hawk Road? Looks like D-A-V, D-A, it looks like D-A-V-I-S. It looks like Maurice Davis, Hawk Road.
He spoke on L, Mayor.
Huh?
He spoke on L.
Oh, he already spoke.
Okay. Must fill out two of them, then, okay? Sounds, sounds like he was there before. Is there anyone in the audience who did not understand the system and had not filled out a form to speak and would like to do so? I'll allow at least one more, one more candidate. Okay. Would you fill out a form?
Yes, I will.
Yep? I'll let you speak. And the lady at the back as well.
Unless you're putting them to work. Well, thank y'all very much. I'm Ricky Cherry. I live at 3110 Old Chocolate Bayou Road.
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you, you know, we go through this as Christians, and, and I would like to ask the council to think about right and wrong. So many of us live in the country and we enjoy our lives. We don't want to be annexed. And I don't want to get emotional about it, but it comes down to right and wrong. Y'all are trying to rush this through, and we feel that it's wrong. We don't feel that it's the right thing to do. We don't, because we hadn't had time. We just all went through, you know, floods, and we've got family members that have been through floods. And the short notice that we all received, and we get the letter in the mail, huh, and then we're trying to hustle down to try to understand what's going on. And I, I just don't feel that it's right. I don't. But I do want to say thank y'all for letting me have a voice. I'll be here at our next meeting, and I am opposed to what goes on. Thank you.
Good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Fill out one of those forms and bring it up. Be sure to fill out one of those forms to bring it up here in a few minutes. Sure.
I'm Mayor and Council.
Pull it down where you can.
I did understand the, to fill out the form, my husband was the first one to speak. He did fill out a form. I should have filled one out as well.
He's going to get frustrated, isn't he?
Well, this is the only thing I need to know, is that I know y'all can't answer our questions, and as somebody already asked, where can we find these answers? I don't want to wait till the next time the, the next meeting is to find out what the answers are. I've been told this is already a done deal, there's nothing we can do about it. I don't want, I hope that's not what it is. I hope that this is a democratic society where we can vote for this. I know y'all want to get this through, but we're in section A. We've been in your 20-year plan for 39 years, and I'm like all these other people. I moved from Houston to, out to the country where we can have fires, we can have bonfires, we have a lake, we have a pond, we have catfish, we have animals out there. I don't, this is not... I don't, this is not a residential section. And something, when I called about the garbage collection, this is what they told me, that they, I could put my garbage out on the street in the sacks, because I called to see how that was gonna work for us, because that's the only service I was told from the last meeting that we would be getting. I don't need your garbage collection, number one. And number two, I have over 100 trees that we have planted on that property that was a rice field. And this is, this was our home, and this was, now we're retired and you want, and we're gonna spend more money on taxes? This is not what we want, and this is not what the people out here want. This is, this is my land, this is my home. This is where I chose to be. So I, I just hope that you guys haven't made this a done deal and that you'll allow us to vote on this. Give us time. I'm like everybody else, everybody with the flood, my husband was right. I know some people laughed about it. But County Road 48, also known as Kingsley, never flooded in 1979. I had my third child, and that was the only way I could get to the hospital. Y'all haven't messed with County Road 59 yet, just at the front. But I'm telling you, Ford and Alvin had that much rain in 79, what we had this. I saw butane tanks floating, mobile homes floating in Manville and Alvin in my area. And that's exactly what we just had out there. So it, we may have had the 100-year, 1,000-year, whatever flood they decided to call it. But we had it in 1979, and we didn't flood, and we're flooding now. So something needs to be done.
Yeah, be sure, give us your name and address.
I will. Yes, sir. Kay Hauser, 2807 Honeysicle, Rosherin, Texas.
As you would, you mind filling out a form to make sure that you appear legally. So thank you for being here.
Thank you for listening.
I appreciate all of your coming. Okay, I appreciate, appreciate the good quality. We talked to him before. I think we had Maurice Davis talk a little earlier, didn't we? Are you Maurice Davis?
I have a question. So can I explain how this process and point to work, or maybe the gentleman on the end cab?
Good, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, I appreciate the input you guys gave, and you're, you're, you're a great bunch, good, great presenters. And thank you, made some good points. Moving in our agenda, uh, past the staff review, we have, uh-
Mayor. Can, can we allow Mr. Harden to provide, um, uh-
Yep. So-
I think you've got more presentation to do at this point.
So, uh, as I stated at the outset, Mayor and Council, we've, uh, you know, tried to, I mean, obviously, some of these are just, you know, general questions, but there were some specifics, and, uh, tried to, uh, write those down. I'll have staff meet tomorrow morning and put together a next-generation FAQ sheet. And we'll publish that, uh, with what we have no later than Thursday onto that website. And Joel, if you could put that schedule up that you had. So there, the next public hearing is, uh, next Monday back in here. We also have two separate JPHs, but we'll figure that out. And then the considerations would be scheduled in November at those meetings on the 6th and the 13th as well back in here. So, uh, you know, we, one of the good things, we've got the FAQ out there. We'll put in, together our next, uh, one with some of the specifics and the questions and the themes that were brought up tonight, uh, just so everybody has that. And then we can always supplement that, uh, as we go forward after the public hearing phase and in the ordinance consideration phase, uh, in November. So we got time to put that together, and we'll do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. I believe we have, uh, item five that we need to clear if I'm in our agenda.
Counsel.
Counsel discussion. Uh, staff having any comments or questions on this? At this point? Can we go down the list, will you?
So, I think on the, on this, Mayor, we, we did the staff review, comments. And we'll get you back to the next phase of those questions and answers, and we'll be back at this again next week.
If the, if the council has any question upon this, at this point, respond.
I don't have anything at this time, Mayor.
Okay, you have to comment? You have to comment?
Okay, it'll come to me first. Um, first off, for the schedule that was put up there, um, for y'all that may not have gone through this process or totally understand, basically, there's another public hearing like we just did today, where residents can come speak, council has time to discuss. The votes would be on November 6th and November 13th. And there's two sets of votes, first reading and second reading of the ordinance, just to give you an idea of what the process is moving forward. I, I'll be honest, we're not gonna see eye to eye on this. But I do feel like you should understand where I'm coming from and my reasoning. Some of y'all know me, a lot of y'all probably don't. But I've been through this. Not with my house, but with land we own, with my family's house. My family's been here for well over 100 years. We were here before the city was. And I've, it was kind of interesting looking through it. It seems like about every 20 years, the city annexes property that we own. So we're, we're not in this one, but 2021, I guess I should be looking forward to some. A lot of people ask, who benefits? The community benefits, in my view. I, I've heard a lot of people, no, I'm sorry, y'all have had your turn, it's now our turn. This is, unfortunately, it's not a two-way dialogue. My, my, my email's up there. I, I will be happy to-
Who are you?
I'm Keith Ordno. I'm sorry.
Let us, let us do our- You've had your chance to make a few comments, and I appreciate that. So let us, let us have a few comments.
We're, we're not gonna agree, most likely, on this. But I do feel as an elected representative, it's my job to tell you my reasoning and my viewpoint. I, I've heard several people talk about living in the country. I grew up on 14 acres in between Alvin, Pearland, and Manville. To my knowledge, it's still not in anybody's ETJ. It will probably never be annexed. So I have lived in the country. I've lived in the country until about six or seven years ago, when after my father's passing, I decided to move into town to be closer to my mother. So I, I do understand, probably better than y'all will ever believe. I, I raised animals. My father was ag teacher. I will tell you, I, I will tell you, I never felt that I lived in the country. We have 100 acres in between here and San Antonio. That's the country. If I need to find a Walmart, it's 40 minutes away. So where I view that who benefits as, when I say the community, is the fact that there are services basically in the backyard that right now residents pay for. That are in the city. I, I'm sorry. It's, let, let, please give me my time, I gave you your time. So the benefit is that I'm fairly sure the majority of y'all drive on city streets, go to businesses that are here because of city services, water, sewer, streets, the development that all of those things have allowed. So there are benefits of the city to people that live outside the city, in my view. You know, a, again, my family's been here 100 years. I remember when I could look out and I could name who owned every car that drove by 518 and 35. I, I've heard people tell me forever, we moved here because it's a small town. We were here when it was a small town. Part of me wishes it stayed that way. The problem is, when you have a good community, guess what? People want to move in. I, I, I've told several people, the la, that there's only one person in my view that feels like the city's the perfect size, and that's the last one that moved here. Because everybody else thought it was fine, it could take one more. And the next person that moves in, they don't think it's too big either. The state law, I'll be honest, that is the reason I want to see this happen. Because the state has forced our hand. I would've been fine with the state law that allowed all residents to vote on an annexation. The ones being annexed and the ones that were in the city. But that's not how the state did it. And water and sewer, that, that's been talked about here multiple times. That's not paid by property tax, that's paid by use fees. For, yeah, the trash service, I'll let staff deal that. As far as I know, that started everywhere we've annexed relatively quickly. ETJ, okay. And here's where I'm probably going to make people mad. But, but, but due to what the state has done, I will state now, I've sent it to some of y'all in the email form, my next movement for the city because, in my personal opinion, what the state has done has made it almost impossible for us to annex anything moving forward, once the new state law goes into effect.
Now, why do you think that is?
Sir?
Because the people don't-
Sir?
Would you please let- Would you let him speak? Thank you.
So I will, for the residents of the city that pay the taxes, that support it, I will be making a motion to stop all services into the ETJ. And, and I'm fine with that. But that, that will mean, and, and- It, it'll mean a lot of negative things. I honestly don't believe the state understood who all this affected. I can tell you, I spoke with some of the representatives' offices, and they told me flat out, no, this law doesn't affect Pearland. This Pearland, and many of y'all that moved here in the 80s, 90s, those timeframe, I heard a couple of them speak, would, it, it would be very hard for you to convince me that you didn't move here because it was a nice, small community. Without city taxes, you don't even have that nice, small community. So it, it's a double-edged sword, and I understand that. But I do feel like the community as a whole benefits from the city of Pearland and the taxes that our residents pay. And when I look, I represent over 100,000 people. And personally, I do believe these annexations are what's best for that 100,000 people moving forward. If I was in your shoes, I would have the same arguments y'all do. But when I look at the bigger picture, it's what's best for the community as a whole. And in my opinion, that's what I'm up here to do, is look out for the community. And I will be honest, there's areas on that map that I wish we could annex, and there's several reasons why some of them we can't, that will end up being surrounded by city and have none of the city services. So sheriff's cars will have to drive through Pearland to get to them. I'm not sure what they would do for fire and EMS services, because they're not in the, they're not in an emergency services district. Right now, they rely on the city of Pearland to provide those services. It's, it's not going to be a smooth operation moving forward. And those are the things I wish that the state would've looked into a little deeper when they decided to do this. So, again, website, my contact information's up there. Or, kayordno@pearlandtx.gov. I'll, I'll be happy to communicate with any of y'all, but that's my view and where I stand.
Do you have any comments, Mayor?
For those of y'all who don't know me, my name's Trent Perez. I'm a council member here, um, obviously. And I, you know, I, I, I understand and I feel your argument. And I think anybody who's gonna be on that side of the table will feel as if you do. But I honestly think that anybody who's gonna be on this side of the ta, table will generally feel, we won't bat a thousand on this, I'm, I'm sure, but generally feel the way that we do. It does affect you. We're, you know, we get, if you get annexed, you're gonna have a, a higher tax bill. And I appreciate that, particularly those on, um, that, that are struggling. And we, we do try and assist and, and do what we can to provide homestead exemptions and, and try and lower the tax bill we can for people who are struggling. But it is about building a community. If, Joel, if you could, could you bring up the, um, the annexation ordinance map? But, and I, and I know that a lot of y'all see this as, what's gonna happen for me tomorrow? And to be fair with you, we're not gonna annex today and bring out water to you tomorrow. That's, it, it, it's just not the way the process works. Any more than you're gonna be able to expand your house as immediately as you dream to do it. You've got to put an investment in it. Over time, that investment will pay off for all of you. Uh, if you look at some of these areas that were annexed in the late 90s, early 2000s, 1998, both, mostly Shadow Creek, 1990, that's Lower Kirby. Those property values went from probably $600 an acre to probably about $20 a foot. The, the, the investment over time will be in your property value. What you invest, and, and some of you won't see that, and some of you don't feel that, and some of you don't understa, don't understand that that is a benefit to you. But there are benefits to being annexed that are beyond, we're not gonna bring water to you tomorrow. For the area, Annexation L, we do have a master plan that shows water going out in that area. We do plan on doing that. Can we do it tomorrow? No. But in 15, 20 years, we do plan on bringing those services. And, and I, I understand, I understand that that's, I understand that that's laughable to all of y'all. But in 20 years, when you have water, it won't be. When you're able to sell your property, excuse me for just a minute, when you're able to sell your property for more, because you have water, it's not gonna be as laughable. I, I understand that, I understand that. And look, and I'm not, I'm not trying to convince you of my argument, I'm just trying to let you know what our rationale is. Councilmember, can, council, councilmember Ordno, I think said it very succinctly, and I would agree with his argument. This is not the country. It hasn't been the country for some time.
That's your definition.
I appreciate, that's my definition. I, I appreciate you're not gonna agree with that. There, there are parts of Southern Brazoria County where you can go and no one will care about you. There, you will have no services, and you will pay very low taxes. And you can have all the chickens and all the dogs you want, and, and no one will ever interrupt that. But as Councilmember Ordno said, it's gonna be about two hours before you can get to Walmart. It's gonna be a couple hours before you can get to a restaurant that has a health inspection, that you know you're eating safe food. To the, those of you that don't believe that you're getting services, these are the services you're getting already, you just aren't paying for them. You, you pay, I understand that, but the sales tax doesn't cover all of that. I'm not going to convince you that, that this is the best for y'all. What y'all, what, what y'all need to know, what you deserve to know, is why is it that this is a motivation for us? It's a motivation because we have to plan now for what we need to do in the future. And as we grow as a city, we have to be able to be prepared for that growth. What, what, what returns to the citizens is an increase in property value, an increase in services over time. I'm not gonna lie to you and say that we're gonna do it tomorrow, because that's just not feasible. It's not feasible for y'all to invest that quickly in your own land either. But we will bring it to you. It will come. Again, if you look at the annexation map and look at some of the areas that we annexed some time ago, and look at some, what some of that property is, um, is valued at now, it wouldn't have been valued at that had the pro, had the city not annexed and protected that area, made sure that the development came, the development was protected with zoning, that the utilities were out there, that fire surface is out there, that your insurance rates could go, could be lower. That we helped assist in flood prevention, that your home is built to a code. Uh, so some of y'all, I mean, that y'all were talking about, um, um-
48?
County Road 48, County Road 59, that was holding water? I'm, I'm a civil engineer, I'll tell you why that's holding water. It's supposed to. And back in 20, 30 years ago, those roads didn't hold water because they built the roads right on the existing land. They didn't care much for how it was gonna, how water was gonna drain across them. And because of that, homes flooded. So when we rebuild those roads, we lower them. We lower them so that the homes are up and that those roads can be conveyances. So, when we rebuild those roads, we lower them. We lower them so that the homes are up and that those roads can be conveyance systems. That is why those roads, in extreme events, take on water. It's not because we're trying to flood the areas, we're trying to keep the area from flooding. So, again, I've got, I've got the same public email address for all of you who had this information, who are requesting this information, it's all public information. You have the right to ask for it, we are obligated by federal law to give it to you. So, it'll all be available to you just by the virtue of you asking. I'm happy to have any conversation with any of you for as long as it takes for me to at least answer your questions. Again, we're not going to agree. But you deserve answers to your questions, I'm happy to give them to you and explain it to you as best I can. And, you know, if we don't agree, I'll still be respectful to you if you promise to be respectful to me, and I'll tell you why it is that why, well, we feel at this side of the table it's important. So, I do appreciate all y'all coming out, I do appreciate that this does impact you, and that doesn't, that doesn't weigh on me lightly. You know, we want y'all to be happy, this is not going to make you happy, and that bears a burden on me, it does. But ultimately, as a council member, we have a responsibility to the growth of the community, and this is part of that plan. With respect to anybody who brought a comment about what we're doing in the process, I assure you that we will not do anything that is not allowed by state law. And if there is anything that we are not doing, as has happened in the past, there was some annexations that we went through that where we had some hiccups and staff, some staff members at that time did not do exactly what they want, then, you know, then we let it go. But our staff will make sure that we are following everything in accordance with the state law. Again, you have every right to ask for any question you want, you have every right to ask us for answers to your questions, and I feel I am obligated to give them to you. So, again, I appreciate y'all coming out. You know, I wish I could give you better answers, I don't think that they are available. But again, please continue to voice, to speak your voice.
Yeah, appreciate it, Mayor. I would like to start out saying thank you for coming out and speaking to us tonight. Some of the things that you brought up tonight, I'm probably, well, I know I'm the only council member up here that was, back in 2000 to 2013, was on city council. And went through some of the same things then. But I think, you know, the questions that you brought up are very good, I think they deserve answers on there. I think, you know, some things that you need to look at, too, I think some of them mentioned about having some chickens and different stock and stuff like that. Once you're annexed, there are ordinances that set up on limits, so you need to know that. But, you know, my concern really is the debt part for city council and the mayor. I can tell you from my standpoint of view, we went through looking at annexing the part in with the airport and went to, with the text doc, and went up in Fort Worth, the federal side, and, but it, I think we looked at it two or three times. But there's no reason for us to do that, the only thing you make money off of is fuel. And during the time when we were looking at buying it, we weren't going to get the fuel cost out of it, so it's a waste of our time and a waste of our money. And certainly, I voted against it, and it wasn't something that we should do. And so, I would vote against it again today if it comes back out again. It's nothing to it. But my real concern, and I've talked about this a lot, is the debt that the city of Pearland has. And it is a big concern, when I look at the numbers up there, what we would realize out of it during the annexation, and as far as revenue coming in on property taxes, and I think some of you are right, I don't know whether 130,000 dollar home around here. But, you know, when we do that, and if you take, and you take the money that would come in on the city of Houston, I mean, excuse me, I worked for the city of Houston 13 years, so. But anyway, when you come in, you take a look at it, our indebtedness to their, the biggest part of the money that we come in pays for our bonding, that would do it. If we provide y'all with water and sewer, the only way that's going to be done with the bond issue and our CO. And so, further in debt would go to do that. So, like I said, my concern is that if you add the two areas of debt in, we're getting to be right at a billion dollars in debt, and that's with a B. And so, that's my big concern. But having said that, the state is the one that's forcing our hand on this, or the city's hand on, not mine. But with the city's hand on this, to do it within a certain period of time. We set up during my period of 13 years previously, or 12 years, we set up periods of time that we were going to look at annexing, how long it would take, and working with the city manager during that time, and also with some of the others that are here and our city attorney to do that. And some of the areas, it just wasn't beneficial to do it. We couldn't provide services, some amount in Silver Lake area out there, they paid so much on an agreement for, you know, police and fire and EMS services and things of that nature, as a support. And it's a volunteer deal, it's not anything other. So, I have a lot of concerns, I think you had a lot of information that you brought to the table tonight with your concerns. And I think, you know, the money part really concerns me heavily on that, as being a council member. And I know Councilmember Ordno said it, you know, on that, it was, you know, it was his concern in the tax rate and stuff, and that's, you know, and that's true. You know, and so, I can't tell you how I'm going to vote on this right now. But if it comes to a vote, but I think it'd be very negative right now to be able to vote for this on the annexation. But we'll see what the city manager comes out with and the staff on the dollars amount and answer the questions y'all have to do that. So, that's my big concern, but I appreciate y'all coming out tonight and speaking for your particular areas that, looking at annexing into. And I, you know, I appreciate some of the emails and text messages I've been getting. I think a lot of valid information has transpired tonight, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
That completes the council part. Does staff have any wrap-up comments at this point?
Mayor, I have one other small thing that I wanted to discuss while we're still in public session. If you can bring up, Joel, if you can bring up Annexation L. L. On the north, north end of that, I spoke with some of the residents about that particular area. I'm not convinced that those, the residential homes that are up against, I believe that's Hays and Canning, I don't believe those are going to, are necessary for us to meet our goals for the airport. So, I'm personally requesting that we exclude those areas, those homes up against that front entrance. I think that we, for the goals that we are trying to meet on that north part of the airport, I think we can meet that without having to annex. Those are a few homes. I can't, I just can't find a fair way to include those.
Can I complete your comments?
Yes, yes, sir, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, do you have any wrap-up comments?
No, sir.
Joe, did you have any wrap-up at all?
No, Mayor, that concludes staff report, thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is item six, which is adjournment. This time, I will adjourn this particular standalone public hearing at 8:16. Thank all of you for being here, we're going into further business with the city. At 8:17, we'll reconvene the council meeting. Moving to item number eight, which is mayor council issues for future council agenda. This time, we will, we will recess into executive session. Moving into the exec session at 8:17. Obviously, we will recess into exec session, and obviously, we cannot discuss things, we can discuss things with the staff, but we cannot make any decision in the executive session. But however, upon return to open session, we will return and make any comments and the decisions at that point upon return to open session. So, at this time, we will...
Mayor, before you do that, I need you to read into the record the two sections that we're going to meet under.
Yes, we have two sessions, which is consultation with city attorney regarding the purchase, exchange, or lease of property for city facilities, and for consultation with city attorney regarding economic development negotiations. Counselor, term of executive session, 9:54. Moving to new business item number 12, regarding purchase, exchange, or lease of property for city facilities.
Yes, Mayor, recommend a motion, consideration approval of the, for the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to enter into a loan agreement and purchase agreement for the sale of real property with Prospect 1704 and/or any related entities.
Salute.
Have motion second. Staff, have any further report?
No, sir.
Here it is, we do have motion second, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Absent from the chamber.
Absent from the chamber. Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to two with council...
Okay.
Six to two, six to one? No. Six and O with the, with the councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
He's all right.
You got an answer? Good. Let's go to item 13, Council action regarding economic development negotiations.
Yes, Mayor, consideration and approval of a development agreement with the Presidio Equities LLC and a reimbursement agreement with the Pearland Economic Development Corporation for drainage and rice dryer roadway improvements associated with the Rice Dryer Business Park and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements.
Salute.
Have motion second, we're discussing any court comment, the council? Mr. Secretary, we do have motion on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero, with councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.